In the perfect world, it's about bettering your personal best. But you start giving out ribbons and trophies and things.
You know, and then all of a sudden, we've gotten into, and I think a lot of it's because so many of the athletes have taken this so seriously, especially in track and swimming. I think those are the two sports.
Softball is fairly serious as well.
But they're very much into trying to set records. And that's become a very important part of it.
Well, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Now Kathy, when you started this competition, was it more about fitness and then you discovered that maybe you could actually become victorious?
No, I was always very competitive athletically. And I like to win. I do not like to lose. And that first track meet showed me that I did have abilities off the tennis court. And it was exciting to realize that.
Well, how fun. Now, how many people are participating in this? Now, I understand that 2010, this is a qualifying year, so there's a lot of people.
There are. The qualifying year is always held on the even years. So this year, 2010, we'll qualify for the National Senior Games in 2011 in Houston, Texas. Where all the numbers aren't quite in, we're projecting around 2,000.
Wow.
Will participate in the Pasadena area in 2010. So that's a lot of people.
Yeah, it is.
And in 26 sports.
Exactly. Wow. That's great. Now, do people bring their families? Are they bringing their adult children and grandchildren to this?
A lot of them do. When we hold it, it's sort of a precarious time of the year because school isn't necessarily out. Where you find the grandchildren coming, becoming more a part of it, is at the National Games because that is truly held when summer, when school is out. But just got brought up something. Two of our favorite, or my favorite events, both in swimming and track, we hold a grandparent grandchild relay.
Oh, how fun. It's kind of like a three-legged race.
It is. But in track, each person runs 50 meters and in the pool, each participant swims 25 yards. And it goes all the way from, you know, real itty-bitty up to, you know, 21 years old. It's the bonding between the grandparent and that child and doing something together.
Our regular viewers know that I am a big supporter of intergenerational programs. That, to me, is the best of all, where a youngster can look at grandma and grandpa and feel connected to them and participate in their life. And as you know, that's a two-way street. It helps improve everybody's attitude.
Absolutely.
Now, we're going to be giving contact information, but before we put it up on the screen, is it easy to contact you and for people to make themselves available and to register?
Yeah, it's very easy. The best way to do it is to go to our website.
Yes.
Which is www.pasadena senior center.org.
All one word, of course.
All one word, all lowercase.
Pasadena Senior Center.
Dot org.
Dot org.
And then follow the link to Senior Olympics.
I got you.
And that's, and it'll have email, it'll have phone numbers. We're extremely accessible.
Well, a brief sketch, some of the games. You've mentioned 26 events, like bowling?
You start in the alphabet on A and you work down to B.
I see, okay.
So start with archery.
Archery, all right.
Go to badminton, bowling, billiards.
Oh, this is like a test here.
Golf, powerlifting, race walk, road walk, road race. And there is a difference between race walk and the road race. Swimming, softball, co-ed softball, track and field, table tennis, volleyball.
Wrestling?
Powerlifting.
Powerlifting, that's what I was thinking.
Cycling.
How fun.
And I must have missed one, but rope climb, push-ups, and pull-ups. So maybe that's, I think that's going to be all opposed to the 26.
Well, let me give you a visual here. Aging in L.A. visited the swimming competition held at the AAF Rose Bowl Aquatic Center in Pasadena. So let's all take a look at some of the participants.
We're from Palmye County Aquatic Masters, and we are here supporting our Mewoc Indian Sister, Zandra Belts. And Zandra is the only Native American swimmer in Pacific Masters. And this is an ancient drum, actually, and a Mewoc artifact. And when Zandra swims, we always play the drum for her so she can feel her ancient vibrations and swim to the joy and rhythm of the drum in the water.
A longtime participant at the Senior Olympics, Vivian Stansil is visually impaired, but that doesn't stop her from taking part in the Games. We asked her what prompted her to start swimming.
I weighed so much, and the doctor told me that if I didn't get the weight off, that I wouldn't see my 60th birthday. I wouldn't see my grandchildren. And so I've been practicing and making mistakes and doing well. And I think this is great for me because it gives me something to live for in life. I tell other people about the Senior Olympics. I'm visually impaired, and it's called retinitis pigmentosis, and it's only 1,000 cases in the United States. They don't have a cure for it at the moment. I'm here to encourage other people to get involved regardless of from '9 to '99.
Wow, what a great time. That's a very effective person there. Good on Vivian.
Very inspiring.
Yeah, we'll see, talk to some other competitors later in the program, but it's not always about winning, is it? Sometimes people can sort of re-engage with life by being involved in sports.
Yeah, I think it's that. It's about participating. I think that's the most important thing, that they get out there and do it. What we find, and I think, and I know Kathy would agree to it, are the friendships that are being developed through this and the camaraderie.
That's a very important part.
You could walk into a track, you know, 15 years ago, and all of a sudden Kathy and Bert now have this whole other extended family in the track club. And I think that's almost more important than winning the medal.
Are there volunteer opportunities too? I mean, every organization has short volunteers. I mean, someone, pardon the pun, can sort of dip their toe in, so to speak.
Absolutely. We've had a lot, a number of people that are volunteered, just wanting to see what it's like.
Right.
And then the next year, they'll come out and do it. I think to some of it is, it's intimidating.
Well, sure.
You're exposing yourself.
Of course.
You know, you're putting yourself on the line. So that's a great way to just get your feet wet on.
Okay. Do you find yourself sort of planning your year around the various events?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Oh, yes.
Well, now, as a statewide organization, are the meets held all up and down the state?
They are, right now, they're held in, I believe it's eight communities. Between, mostly here in Southern California. There are two in Northern California right now. And the other six here in Southern California.
Okay, well, excuse me, it's time for a short break. When we return, we'll resume our discussion of the California State Senior Olympics. Please stay tuned, we'll be right back. Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, the California State Senior Olympics held recently in the Los Angeles area. Our guests are event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and athlete Kathy Bergen. Thank you again for joining us. We were just discussing not only the volunteer help that's needed to run something. On a track meet, it takes a lot of people. But this is a dot org, this is a foundation, so donations are important as well.
We could not run, or do what we do, we couldn't run the event without significant sponsorship. And I would say probably 25% of the people who participate donate in some.
Right.
And we're nonprofits, so it's all tax deductible.
Tax deductible, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's inexpensive to integrate.
I'm sure.
Our budget is about, depending upon a qualifying or non-qualifying year, but the budget runs about $90,000 to $95,000.
I got you. Well, that's a drop in the bucket for Nike.
We would love it, absolutely.
Well, Mr. Knight, if you're listening, this is a...
Please.
Actually, it's a good cause.
It's a great cause.
But with track and field, there's not much expense beyond a good set of sneakers and...
Well, I believe the expense to the organization is for the officials, for the venue.
Of course.
For the certification, I think it has...
Right, no, I understand that. But for the individual competitor, I mean, if you're race walking, what, you need a pair of shorts and a tank top, right?
Very unlike golf. Where golf is, you know, equipment-wise.
Really expensive.
With cycling, you know, some of our cyclists, their bikes are worth, in the neighborhood of $5,000.
I know, yeah. But they are amazing, these carbon fiber, weigh five pounds, that's really astonishing. Now, in the first half of our program, we watched the swimming competition. Let's take a look at senior athletes competing in racquetball, badminton, basketball, and bowling events. Eighty-six-year-old Bill Tom competed in the Worldwide Olympics in 1956. Then as a senior, he took up badminton.
I teach junior high school here for eight years. One of the colleagues, he played badminton. So at noon time, he said, hey, Mr. Tom, come and play some game at noon. We'll pay for ice cream after lunch. I was buying him ice cream all semester. Then the year I went to Taiwan, I learned a few things about the Asian game. I came back, he buying me ice cream.
Wow, that looks like fun. It seems that they're having a good time.
They love it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. There's so many that look forward to it every year.
Well, I'm sure. And then, like you, Kathy, you can look to really having an edge when you hit that next up, age qualifying level.
The Pasadena Senior Games is always my favorite. I think because of the wonderful experience we had for the first time when I met Cynthia and several other competitors that I'm still seeing now.
Well, how many events do you participate in per year?
Track meets? Probably about 10 when I'm healthy.
Wow, that's great. Now, I would imagine you have to have some special health concerns. I mean, you want people to be fit, obviously, going into this, but sports injuries are common at any age.
They're very common. And one of the prerequisites that we have at all the high-profile events is have medical, emergency medical team and staff on site.
That's very important.
And they're hidden things. I mean, we have had a couple of people, we've lost a couple of people.
Right, but people shouldn't be intimidated by that.
Absolutely not.
You know, you get up in the morning and you can fall in the bathroom.
Yeah, I mean, the worst thing that happened this year is a woman basketball player broke a fingernail.
Oh, my gosh.
Not that, that's, yeah.
A calamity.
It was, it was.
It can be. Well, before we leave, again, the contact information to reach you, Cynthia.
Is the website at www.pasadena senior center.org. Or they can email me at cynthia r@pasadena senior center.org.
Fabulous. Unfortunately, our time is up for today's Aging in L.A. program. Thanks so much to our guests from the California State Olympics Program. Event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and world-class athlete Kathy Bergen. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. For older adults and seniors who want to stay healthy and independent, the National Institute of Health recommends four types of exercises. Strength and weight-bearing exercises to build muscle and increase metabolism. Balance exercises to improve posture, strengthen muscles, and help prevent falls. Stretching exercises to improve freedom of movement. Then endurance exercises, such as walking and swimming, to improve heart health and increase metabolism. Always, always check with your doctor before starting an exercise program. Now, if you are interested in trying a particular sport or activity, join a club and enjoy the company of like-minded adults who enjoy the same activity. Many clubs will offer you a free trial period so that you can find out if it's right for you. Find inexpensive or free exercise classes for older adults at your local senior centers, YMCA's, and community colleges. Try to be active for at least 30 minutes each day. Walking your dog, doing yard work, walking around the mall, and even doing housework or gardening will help. Gentle yoga and Tai Chi can be good for the mind as well as the body. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View Channel 35 so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching. We'll see you the next time. Cynthia, thank you so much for making time.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Yes, yes, I know I'm late. I'll be there soon.
It's better to lose one minute of your life than your life in one minute. Watch the road.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, January 21st, 2011, here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we want to welcome members of the public who are here with us today, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system and rebroadcast them in the evening. We also are available a number of other ways besides live and through the television. Through the internet, you can go to our city's homepage at la-city.org, where we also have our agendas available and all the materials for our council meetings. But you can catch our meetings live on streaming webcasts, and we also archive all of our past council video online as well. We also are available through your telephone by calling the following number, 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into any of the council meetings, as well as any of our committee meetings. And then finally, if you are closer to San Pedro or Van Nuys, you can avail yourself of City Hall chambers there and not only listen to us live, but also testify from those facilities at Van Nuys City Hall and San Pedro City Hall. I want to thank those three members who are here on time, council members Labange and Zine, with myself, that's three. And we do have excuses for city business from council members Cardness and Mr. Rosendahl and Personal Business and Ms. Perry to arrive at 11:30. But besides those three, we are expecting all council members who are now late, if they will make their way to council chambers right away out of respect for the public and pursuant to our council rules. That's Councilmember Alakon, Councilwoman Hahn, Councilmember Wezar, Councilmember Corretts, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. We do have presentations on Fridays for special individuals and organizations to commemorate important dates and accomplishments throughout the city. And we will be having four presentations today. Two of those will be by Ms. Perry, one by Mr. Wezar, and one by Mr. Parks. As soon as we have a quorum, we will also begin the business of the city. And I know Mr. Zine and I are going to take one item out of order before we begin the presentations, but we are waiting a quorum for that, Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine, we're going to wait a quorum before we start that, so we can hold that. This is our second quorum call. We still only have two council members, councilmembers Zine and Labange, while with myself. Councilmembers Alakon, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson are both late, or all late, excuse me, if they will please make their way to council chambers. And if the sergeants-at-arms can please inquire to their whereabouts so we can begin meeting. And out of respect for our public as well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Perry and Mr. Smith. Ms. Perry, would you like to begin? We are, we do have a reward motion, but while we're waiting quorum, we can begin our presentations. Would you like to begin your presentation for Para los Niños?
Okay, you want everybody to come up? Why don't we have everyone come up? Giselle Acevedo, who's the president and CEO of Para los Niños, and Victor. Orozoto, sixth grade student at Para los Niños. And...
Do you want the board members to stand?
We ask any room if you want to come up.
Board members?
Come on, come on up. Yeah, sure. We have Zach Guadara, chairman of the board, Roger Carrick, board member for nearly thirty years, Jim Morrison, Francisco Pinto, Kathy Hesion, Robin Beaker, Para los Niños Charter School Advisory Board members, Melinda Batton and Lucy Okumu, and then from staff, Elena Stern, vice president of communications. And then we have, I want to make sure I don't miss anybody, Tanya Toll, Para los Niños founder, currently president. Big hand, founder. Currently president and CEO of Beyond Shelter, Mickey Jordan, former longtime Para los Niños president and CEO. Currently president and CEO of Junior Blind of America. There, I don't think your participants will, some participants here in the Para los Niños Youth Workforce Services Program funded by the city. I will mention her name, but I think she hasn't arrived yet, Avisford Lee Thomas in the city attorney's office, and Bonnie Sang, City National Bank. Today, it's a privilege to introduce Para los Niños president and CEO, Giselle Acevedo. And Giselle is joined here today by the people I've introduced, Para los Niños board members, charter school advisory board members, senior staff and participants in the Para los Niños Youth Workforce Services Program. I'm proud to join all of them in the celebration of Para los Niños 30th anniversary in our great city. After 1979, in 1979, after reading a story in the Los Angeles Times entitled "Children of Skid Row," an article which captured the essence of impoverished children living in the shadows of society, Tanya Toll, a social worker and a teacher, was moved to create the first children's social service agency on Skid Row. And the agency was called Para los Niños for the children. Using proceeds from just a $5,000 grant, an old eyelash factory at Sixth and Gladys was rented, renovated, and licensed. It soon opened as a childcare facility in January of 1981. And for the next thirty years, Para los Niños has worked tirelessly, tirelessly, to give children living in the poorest communities of Los Angeles and San Bernardino counties the education, the skills, the resources required to build a future beyond poverty. Today, the devastating effects of a litany of social problems such as unequal access to quality education, poverty, homelessness, gang violence, joblessness, domestic abuse, substance abuse, mental health issues, and illiteracy create learning barriers for thousands of kids in our community that can prevent them from achieving their true potential. Now, under the stewardship of the former president, Mickey Jordan, and the current leadership of President Giselle Acevedo and its board of directors, Para los Niños is now poised to build on its past to create an even stronger future. And they are doing so by developing a model, a replicable model, to more formally integrate educational programs with mental health and family health services in a place-based approach to more effectively close the achievement gap. I am proud to stand here today in declaring this day Para los Niños Day in the city of Los Angeles, and to applaud this organization for thirty years of hard work. We support their outstanding vision to be the model of excellence in integrated urban education, leading to long-term success for children, families, and communities in which they live. And now, it's my pleasure to invite President Giselle Acevedo to say a few words on behalf of those assembled here with her today.
Ms. Perry, just before we hear from Giselle, I think there's a couple council members that would like to add their good wishes as well, starting with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleague, John Perry, for allowing this presentation. And just significant for Para los Niños for everything you've done for our children. I know there is a strong presence. You're changing a culture in an area that speaks to what is humane, what is right. We think about this country, you would not even fathom the hardships kids, children, families are enduring. And with your presence, the way you change the quality of life is just amazing. And to see you spread out into other districts, in Pico Union and Westlake, Temple Bowery, I've watched you perform in such a way where now you are being creative about how you use the educational facilities, now entering charter schools, extending the whole spectrum of services. And that takes a lot of heart, a lot of hard work. You're all the unsung heroes, and I thank you on behalf of all the children, all the moms and dads, who can actually have a semblance of a family life because of your care and your support. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing Para los Niños here. And it's been such a joy to work so closely, both as a council member and before, and with this incredible board, including ex-bosses of mine, like Roger Carrick, and others who have been such an amazing presence in this city. I'm proud also through the foundation work that I know my mom, for a while, directed a family foundation that's been a longtime supporter of Para los Niños. And to see that growth, you never know when you invest in groups what will happen. They can be the most angelic groups in the world with the best mission. And yet, scaling up and growing is the toughest thing that nonprofits do. But the challenges that you tackle are among the biggest with the toughest populations to serve. And the combination of services in which you treat the child and the parents as a whole family, the needs, not just one particular need, but the whole spectrum of needs, I think really laid the foundation for a lot of the work that we're doing now in the city, the family source centers. The model really was there before we clustered all those services at Para los Niños. Can't believe it's been three decades. I wish you all the best in your fourth. I hope that one day you'll work your way out of a job, because that's the point of Para los Niños, is to make these families self-sufficient, to give those opportunities for economic growth, for health, for education. No matter what child you are and where you're born in this city, you should have those opportunities. And to think about the tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, maybe even millions of lives that you've touched, it's been an incredible part of this city. So thank you and congratulations to you all.
Mr. Wezar, if he's come, I want to hug everybody there who do such a wonderful job. Now I call on Mr. Jose Wezar.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Ms. Perry for bringing in a wonderful organization that does so much work. I worked with you when I was on the Board of Education, and let me tell you, to see you grow and prosper and provide the services you do is phenomenal. And with the leadership that you have, it's onto better and bigger things. But at the end of the day, it's about the kids. And when I've taken tours of your facilities, it shows that people are there to support our young people, whether it's people, young kids in Skid Row, or some of your other facilities and services, a lot of it comes from the heart. Congratulations, and we look forward to many, many more years of great services to our young people. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Tanya?
Mickey?
Come on up.
I stand, the two women next to me, I stand on their shoulders daily, and so it's important that they stand by me right now. So thank you, City Council President Garcetti, Council President Pro Tem Perry, and esteemed council members. As you know, my name is Giselle Acevedo, and I am honored to serve as the president and CEO of a special place called Para los Niños, where we are uniquely interrupting the cycle of poverty and supporting long-term academic success and social well-being for children and families. In anticipation of today's 30th anniversary celebration, someone asked me, what if after all these years, Para los Niños ceased to exist tomorrow? What difference would it make? Would it make a difference? The answer for me is clear. Over 7,000 children and families in some of the most homeless communities in Los Angeles would not have access to high-quality education and support services. These hard-working families would not find the opportunities in their underserved neighborhoods that would enable them to turn their backs on poverty. In partnering with Para los Niños, our families know that they are not alone. They know that they can rely on our, on our teams of dedicated, talented, and passionate teachers, and social workers, mentors, and therapists, family advocates, and accountants. At Para los Niños, children and families know they will be embraced and enveloped by comprehensive services, compassionate professionals, and generous supporters. This is an exciting day for us at Para los Niños, because as you can see, we are joined here by current and former staff, board members, longtime friends, and most importantly, to me and to the city, some of our children, youth, and families with whom we are so privileged to work. One of those remarkable young men named Victor Orozco, a sixth grader, a sixth-grade student at our charter school, is here with us today. And Victor educates me and inspires me daily. I know that he will accomplish great things in his life. As I introduce him to you now, I again thank you, I again thank you for this extraordinary honor and acknowledgement. And here's to thirty more years.
My name is Victor, and I am proud to be a Para los Niños student. And I also, I also learned a lot in school, and I will never forget the experiences I had with my teachers and amazing friends. Thank you.
Good job, Victor. Giselle, great job, everybody there. Ms. Perry, let's give everybody a big hand right there for their great job at Para los Niños. As they take their photographs there, Mr. Clerk, I want to call the meeting to order. This meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves, Mr. Wezar seconds. Approval of the minutes.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And also on all resolutions and commendations, at this time, I would like to take up our special item number one. Special item number one, I'd like to call on City Council President Garcetti. Councilman Zine, special item one.
For clarification, sir, item number one is an item...
Is it?
Special item one.
Just make the findings.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Do we need to make the findings, Mr. Clerk?
They're circulated right now.
The motion has yet to be circulated, sir.
Okay, all right. I'll just do the form of... Pursuant to Rule 23, the city attorney, prior, or, sorry, after the posting of today's agenda, the incident that happened in the West Valley where a school police officer was shot, brings to us the urgency of a reward motion. So if, Mr. President, if we could have a vote on the urgency and on the findings first, and then Mr. Zine can introduce the motion that is before us, and we can say it orally while it's being circulated. So can we reopen the roll on the findings, Mr. President?
Yes, let's reopen the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Cabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
That's now before us, Mr. Zine.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Garcia. City, I want to acknowledge our council president, who was the acting mayor during the situation that occurred in the district. In this particular situation, a Los Angeles-uniformed school police officer was on patrol in the vicinity of El Camino College, El Camino High School in the southwest San Fernando Valley. He was on the public roadway adjacent to the high school when he encountered an individual, and subsequent to that encounter, the officer was shot in the chest. Thank goodness the officer's wearing a vest, and he survived that. Witness came, called for help, help arrived. Large perimeter was established. We are still searching for this individual who shot this L.A. Unified School District Police Officer. And I want to acknowledge what our council president, who was acting mayor at the time, assisted at the scene through that ordeal where a number of students were locked down in campuses, where the community was locked out of their residence for an extended period of time, but the police department doing their search for the armed suspect in the community. And I'll mention the reward in just a moment, but first I want to have the representatives from law enforcement, and as you notice, the man, the commander, the assistant chief, two-star chief from the school district police. If you look at that uniform, if you look at that uniform, and you put that uniform next to an LAPD uniform, people can't tell the difference. And that's the key to this situation, and that's why we want to press forward with this reward motion on behalf of the city council and these other folks that have contacted me that we've asked to come forward to increase the reward as high as possible. That uniform is a uniform of law enforcement in this region, whether L.A. Unified School District or LAPD. That uniform represents peace and tranquility, and when someone shoots one of our uniform police officers, that's a very serious matter. And I will announce the reward in just a moment, but I'd like to first hear from Mr. Garcetti and then representatives from law enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and I'll be brief. We've seen a number of incidents of gun violence in the last week, and for families of students in Gardena High School, in Bell, and then in this situation, we've seen what chaos this violence can wreak. We've seen what happens when an individual who is willing to shoot at a person who is hired simply to protect us. And as Mr. Zine said, this school police officer was on city land, if you will. It was across the street. When a citizen approached him, he went and did the work that LAPD does every single day as well. And because this individual was turned around and shot this police officer in the chest, and were it not for his vest, would have killed him. This is a very, very important matter that we get out there, that we incentivize as much as possible, and the public has been great, and we thank them for all the leads and all the information that we have obtained, and our Good Samaritan yesterday, who we lauded as well, who picked up the officer's radio and was able to call for help when the officer fell down, hit his head on the way down, and was knocked out. The reward motion Mr. Zine's been working on, I want to thank him, because it's not just a city reward we're passing, he's also gone to other sources to increase the amount, and he'll talk about that as well. I've been in contact with my colleague Monica Garcia, the school board president, to see also if the school district might be able to offer some money. It's not something they've done in the past, and they have other shootings as well. Mr. Wezar knows this, but perhaps they'll be able to add a little something to that as well. But thank, thank you to all the public for their patience during this. We know it was a very difficult ordeal, but we are not going to rest until we have the suspect. He will be caught, and we hope that this will help incentivize that. So with that, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Zine.
So as far as the reward goes, the city council routinely offers rewards for serious matters, and it's normally $50,000. Extending circumstances, including the attack on a police officer, can raise it to $75,000. So my motion before this council is to approve a $75,000 reward for the arrest conviction of an individual, this individual involved in the shooting of the L.A. Unified School District Police Officer. And I would request that we approve that on a unanimous vote for the $75,000. In addition, the Los Angeles Unified School District Police Association, they are offering a $5,000 on top of our $75,000 reward. In addition to that, we received a call this morning from Los Angeles Retired Fire and Police Association, Jim Wilkie. They're offering a $5,000 on top of the other $5,000. We also have the Los Angeles Police Protective League that's come forward with $5,000 reward. And last night, I received a call from David Gold, who's the owner of the 99-cent store, and he is offering $9,000, $999.99 and 99 cents. And...
I'll pledge a penny.
And through my office, we have the one cent. We are now at $100,000 for the reward for this particular suspect, and that will have the representatives of law enforcement. So the reward is now up to $100,000 for the individual that shot at the Unified School District Police Officer. Chief Don?
Good morning, Deputy Chief David Don, Chief of Detectives, Los Angeles Police Department. I'm here on behalf of... I'm here on behalf of the department to support this motion. We're looking for the public's help and support in identifying this suspect. Based on our investigation, we believe this is an individual who is known in the community around El Camino High School, and we are looking for the public's support to do it. On your desks is a copy of the community bulletin that's been put out today with the sketch of our suspect, and the information at the bottom of it has the information for how to contact the Los Angeles Police Department and provide information. And that is 1-877-LAPD-247. That is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week phone number that will be answered by members of the Los Angeles Police Department who will accept that clue and get it to my investigators of robbery homicide. So thank you to Council President and Council Zine for making this motion and the Los Angeles Police Department's support, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Deputy Chief Jose Santomi with the L.A. School Police Department. There are some familiar faces in the room, and I really want to thank you for taking the time out to hear this very important motion. Thank you, Mr. President, honored council members. Thank you both for having been at the scene. It really does mean a lot to the men and women of the L.A. School Police Department. It takes an exceptional person to be a police officer, and you add the layer of having to deal with kids, and that's what our school police officers do. They're exceptional people, and they don't shy away from, if they have to do a little bit of general law enforcement out on the street. And that's exactly what our officer was doing. He was out on the city street taking care of business, and appropriately so, keeping the neighborhood safe. Because problems in the neighborhood create problems in the school and vice versa. So we work very closely with our law enforcement partners, and in this case, the Los Angeles Police Department. First of all, we're very thankful the officer is okay, he's at home, a little worse footwear with a couple of bruises, but the vest worked. And what Councilman Zine says is key. If the gentleman that shot our officer is going to shoot an armed, uniformed police officer driving a police car, I clearly marked black on my police car, he has no regard for anyone's safety. And whether it's another fellow law enforcement officer from another agency or a child, this gentleman needs to be caught. And we're asking the community's help. If you know who this guy is, call the number on the bulletin. If you are listening right now, turn yourself in, because we will apprehend you. Thank you very much.
And I want to add also that the Los Angeles Police Department is increasing patrols in the area of the southwest valley around the school, looking for the individual, the Metropolitan Division, other sections of the department, including the detective section, are pursuing every lead on this. So if you hear a prowler in the neighborhood or something in that area, please call 911. Police are there, they will respond. Again, we want to apprehend this person as quickly as possible, and again, I appeal to my colleagues to support the $75,000 reward in addition to all the other, and we appreciate the other individuals, including David Gold from the 99-cent store, who's donated that $99 to the fund to help. So we're at $100,000 reward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Weezer would like to add to this as well.
Sure, thank you very much. You know, when I was on the Board of Education, I saw the important work that our Los Angeles School Police did, and it's made up of incredible men and women who are out there each and every day, not only doing the work they do at the schools, but work closely with LAPD on many other issues in the surrounding communities. And I want to thank Councilmember Zine and President Garcetti, because when they go after one of our own at school police, we all got to stand up and make sure that we do everything possible to get that person responsible, and also to work with others to put as many resources available in this effort, and that's what's being done here today. So thank you for bringing this in here, and thank you to our school police for the work you guys do each and every day. It was a great pleasure working with you, and we still work with you closely in many of our areas with LAPD. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Garcetti, Mrs. Zine, chiefs, thank you very much. Let's open the roll, no more speakers on the cue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
My fourth with on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti, chiefs. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to now call on Councilmember Weezer for presentation, Councilmember Jose Weezer for presentation.
Hi, how are you? Deputy Mayor Eileen Adams, nice to see you. Thank you for all your support.
Oh, no, no problem. Moustache. Either way, either way, yeah, either way, it's fine, it's fine. Well, good morning, and today it gives me great pleasure to welcome a very special group of individuals, members of the Office of the 2010 Census. I remember it was not too long ago that I joined Mayor Villarigosa, Magic Johnson, and Taboo from the Black Eyed Peas at a press conference to announce the effort to make sure LA counts in the Census 2010. But we can't take the credit for how successful the Census was here in Los Angeles. It was the collaborated efforts of the city's Census staff who was here with us today, along with the steering committee members, that is responsible for this success. They did an incredible job. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you for your work. The Office of the 2010 Census has successfully led the citywide educational and community outreach campaign, coordinating with city-elected and appointed officials and departments, ensuring that all residents understood the importance of and fully participated in the 2010 Census, and ultimately making sure that every Angelina was counted. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to personally thank the staff from the 2010 Census and its steering committee. They are Maria Brennis, Reverend Dr. John J. Hunter, Arturo Vargas, Kent Wong, Mario Cevallos, Jackie Dupont Walker, Veronica Perez, Anna Ponce, Rodolfo Salinas, Eileen Adams, Norma Vega, Julia Brown, Juan Rodriguez, Laura Martinez, Javier Villalobos, Sarah Washington, Angelica Ayala, Alma Martinez, Carmelita Ramirez Sanchez, Vladimir Campos, Christina Ortega Libatique, Carissa Melado, Thomas Zines, Dennis Moody, John Wickham, Jessica Hines, Jeffrey Berkman, David Alley, Randy Price, Rebecca Ronquillo, Teresa Lujan, George Smallwood, Kathy Goodfry, Ly Lam, and Cindy Hernandez. I wanted to reach each and one of their names because they did an incredible job in making sure the city of Los Angeles was counted. And so at this time, I'd like to invite up here the city's Census Director, Norma Vega, to say a few words. Norma was instrumental in implementing a program to ensure that the U.S. Census Bureau counts each and every resident. She did it here through the city end, but she worked closely with the Bureau, with the 2010 Census staff. So let's also give a huge round of applause to Norma and the work she did for the city during the 2010 Census. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Councilman Weezer, and thank you each and every single one of the council offices, council members, for your support. This truly was a team effort, and today, we already recognize and had a recognition for all of our community partners, and there were hundreds and hundreds of them from every sector, the faith community, and just a lot of people came together, and we had a big celebration to thank them. But today is about recognizing the city family and our steering committee that really did a lot of work prior to the launch of the Census campaign. So today, we are recognizing first and foremost the Office of Census 2010, our staff, my team, that worked so hard, day and night, weekends, holidays, to make sure that we put together an effective campaign. We also want to recognize our technical committee. Before there was an Office of Census 2010, before anybody was thinking about the Census, we had a dedicated team that was working diligently behind the scenes, working to ensure that we gave and provided the U.S. Census Office all of the addresses that we had for the city of LA to ensure that everybody received, that not one house, not one housing unit here in the city of LA would not get a census form. So they worked very hard, and I want to make sure that we recognize them. And this technical committee was comprised of city departments, and we had several, a lot of, all the city departments participated, but in particular, we had representatives from the city attorney's office, CLA, planning, ITA, CDD, LAPD, housing, Department of Engineering, and so on. And these folks really work behind the scenes, and they deserve a lot of the credit that we will have as a city for the success that we will have. And also, I also wanted to recognize our steering committee, a committee that was appointed by the council office and the mayor's office to provide insight and help us figure out how we reach out to the different sectors. And so we are here today to recognize them as well. And lastly, I just want to say that the success of this campaign will not be measured by how well we did, although it is very important, how well we did in our, in our final numbers that will be released in mid-March. But the success of our campaign will come from the coalitions that were built by all of the folks that came together across ethnic lines and across sectors, and of course, within the city family, I feel most proud that we all came together as council offices, as city departments, and as the different shops in the mayor's office. We all came together and united to come together to ensure that our fair share of those federal funds would come our way. So that is what I will be most proud of, is the way that we all came together. So again, I want to thank all of the council members and all of the city departments and all of the shops within the mayor's office for making sure that this is a very successful Census count. And we will know exactly how we did in mid-March. So thank you again, and I'd like to have our deputy mayor, Eileen Adams, say a few words as well.
Norma's really said it all, so just give me 30 seconds to say that for Norma Vega and her team, this was more than a profession. This was a passion. They poured their heart and soul every minute of every day into this census effort, which was a great strategic partnership with nonprofits, with the faith-based community, with businesses, with unions, with all of you. And we've seen some initial results. We know that in terms of our male participation rate, we beat out other comparable cities. We had a male participation rate of 70%. New York had 63%. Chicago had 66%. We'll see other results, but the coming together, the strategic partnerships that were formed, the close work with the council, really helped lead the way and make a difference for millions of dollars coming into our city based upon, you know, these census results. So thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, and we have a couple of the council members appropriate. Mr. Labange?
I want to thank you for your great leadership, but you have a great one at Norma Vega, as you said, there, and that team. And to count, the funny thing is, statistics absolutely count in our ability, and it's so important for California. This is the first time since the union, since we're part of the union, that we only matched our count, and it shows the great growth of America to other parts, but this sense here, it's so important. And we, hopefully, we use these numbers to help provide services to all people as best as possible. Thank all of you, and I hope your feet are okay after all that walking you did.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, it was my pleasure to work with Norma when she was the mayor's San Fernando Valley area deputy mayor, and in fact, my wife and I would see her at more events. Everybody knows my wife attends probably more than half the events I attend with me. And we got to know Norma because she was everywhere in the San Fernando Valley, and particularly in my district. So when she was asked to take on this assignment, it was, it was one that, with mixed feelings because she was doing such a great job in representing the mayor in the San Fernando Valley, and yet, we know how important the Census is, particularly given the way Los Angeles has been treated, in the, the way we were treated in the last Census. And it was absolutely essential that we focus and do a better job than we did last time, but also that we, we just do a better job for the benefit of the people of Los Angeles. And I have to tell you that we are so proud of Norma and her team. I personally want to extend my thanks to the entire team for the tremendous work that you do. There are so many people who were fearful of working with the Census Bureau for, with the, the whole issue of, of identity theft, and also, what are you going to do with my, my information? But to have people working with the communities to engender positive cooperation is, was really the greatest challenge. So this team represents not only a team that, that understands how important the Census is, but is exactly what we needed to reach out to the community and establish trust so that they would willingly come forward with information and tell their neighbors to come forward with the information, and tell the people that live in the back house to be there, to fill out their forms, and tell their family members, of course, to participate as well. So I want to say congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for increasing the participation in the Census. Norma, thank you so much. Frankly, you were being underutilized and in, as the mayor's representative in the San Fernando Valley. He recognized it. That's why he put you in this important position, and I only anticipate that, that you will achieve even more as you move forward, and wish you the best from my wife and I, as she told me last night. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for what I think is going to be an enormous contribution to the city of Los Angeles in the next 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon, and lastly, let me just thank the entire team. I will be very brief, but you guys are incredible dynamos. They say in campaigns, some people like calling and some people like walking. Well, you guys had the most incredible walkers, and it was great to walk alongside you, Norma, in Legion Valley. It was great to have a Census office just underneath us in, in our Hollywood City Council Office. And, and know also that, that kind of door-to-door thing that we've been doing now for months and, and for years doesn't end, and we hope that the engagement that you have laid the foundation for is something that we can continue, even if it's not census time, there is so much information. And Norma, you are a force of nature, and you should be congratulated. I had people from around the country who were saying, oh, Norma Vega's being honored today, you know, I want to be there, or please send my best. So congratulations. I know Jan Perry did the same job years ago, for 10 years earlier, and did an amazing job to make sure we are counted, and you continue that tradition. And thanks to you and your entire team for making sure LA was counted. With that, we'll return to you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Councilmember Cardenas actually expressed that he, he wanted me to express to the whole team and to Norma, to a big thank you. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. And it was the first time that a council member calls me when I'm making a presentation to thank them. So I know this means a lot to him, and he wanted me to thank the whole staff for the incredible work you did. And when I met Norma, we worked on making the Ambassador Hotel a school, and she organized the community to help us get a school in one of the most densely populated areas in the country for high schools. I knew she, when she got this job as a Census Director for the city, that we would do a great job. These people did such a great job. I understand there's an executive order to invite them back to 2020, to do the next Census. Are you guys ready for the task? No? Thank you very much, again. Another round of applause. Is it 2020? What is it?
2020. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we can just run through the agenda real quick, and then we will hear from Ms. Perry next, but first items, please. Item number one is an item for which a public hearing has been, excuse me, item number one is an item for which is noted for a public hearing. There is a request to receive and file this matter, and as much as the applicant has filed a withdrawal with the Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control. And there is no card on this, so without objection, we'll receive and file number one. Next items, please. Items two through seven are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items two, four, and five have been submitted and distributed to council. Further, council has requests from members to continue items six and seven to January 28. Is there any objection to continuing items six and seven? If not, other specials. Mr. Krikorian? Number five for Mr. Krikorian.
Sorry.
Other specials, colleagues, numbers two, three, and four? If not, no specials on two, three, and four? Going once? Going twice? Items two, three, and four, no special, please open the roll. All right, Ms. Han on item three? On the other two, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Councilmembers, if you can direct your attention to the agendas to make sure that we are following, we're running through the agenda, announcing it very loudly and publicly, please follow along. Next items, please. Items eight through 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, those are before us. Do we have cards on any of these? Yes, sir. Before getting to that, there has been a request from a member to continue item 12 to January 28. If there's no objection, we'll continue 12 till the 28th of this month. The other items, do we have cards? Sir, item number eight. Okay. We'll close the hearings on the other matters. Any specials, colleagues, eight through 17? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We do have one item called special, which requires 12 members. We'll consult, I know one member has to leave and is excused to do We'll consult, I know one member has to leave and is excused to do so. Ms. Perry, thank you very much, and the presentation is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today, it's my privilege to introduce Commander Blake Chow to my right, Senior Lead Officer Marco Duarte, Senior Lead Officer Dion Joseph, Wendell Ayala, editor of Channel 35, Sumo Liu, and Jimmy Drong of Autour Studio, Central Area Cadets, and their proud family members. All the people here with me have worked in partnership to create Everyone Has a Choice, a public service announcement that is now running on Channel 35. Commander Blake Chow, former captain of Central Area Community Police Station, helped drive crime down and raise morale by creating problem-solving solutions in Central Area. He expanded youth programs for the young people participating in the Central Area Police Cadet Program. He tasked Senior Lead Officer Marco Duarte, Officer Marie Cardaban, and community volunteers to reach out to the Central Area Police Explorers and seek young people who were interested in participating in additional community programming. These young men and women took time to write letters in support of soldiers serving in combat and participated in an internship program to expose themselves to various work environments in the Central Area. Senior Lead Officer Duarte, Officer Cardaban, and others proposed a public service announcement project and tasked youth volunteers with its creation. The idea, the script, and storyline were then created by these young people, and under the professional direction of Jimmy Dwan and Sumo Liu of Autour Studio, the production of the project began. The editing and final production was then completed by Ted Lynn and Wendell Ayala of Channel 35. The PSA airing on Channel 35 aimed to inspire the young people of our great city by teaching them that their actions have consequences, that knowledge is power, and that every choice they make is important. And before I present the resolution, I would like to cue the video and have everybody take a look at it. Ready to cue the video? Okay, here we go. We need some audio.
What's up, daddy? What's up? Hey, get ready, A and S. Yeah, I'm a friend, right? I'm a friend, right? Come on.
Open up the register. Open up the register.
Come on, man. Forget it, I won't.
You have a choice to make. Make sure it's the right one.
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, for acknowledging us. I think after watching my performance on there, I shouldn't be applying for a SAG card, but I think some of these kids behind here should. Thank you, council members, Mr. President. You know, I'm really humbled to be standing up here, to be able to be the figurehead to accept recognition for what happened in Central, but the fact of the matter is it has less to do with, you know, us as individuals, and more to do with the hundreds of employees that work Central Area and the successes that we've had. You know, when we put the youth group together, we had one mission in mind, the pursuit of crime was an important pursuit for us, but really, I think at a higher calling, we have a need to actually, as civic leaders, leave a legacy behind when we leave and effect lasting change in the community, and more importantly, the youth groups that are within our communities. So here behind me, you're here to recognize the teen CPAB that was put together to do four things. Number one was to build a network into the youth community so that we could ask them, what issues are you facing, and what do you want to do about it, to bring participation into the community? Two, to develop leadership skills. And then three, to develop life skills that will pay a future dividends for the kids that were working with us. They wrote, directed, produced, and blocked out the script for that PSA that you saw up here. What I want to do is I'd like to bring Ashley up really quickly, just to say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Gonzalez, and I do attend the Toto Orgamohan High School, and I'm also a part of a cadet central program. It was my pleasure to be part of this. It was my pleasure to be part of this video because it's a public awareness on how teenagers can take the wrong path or the right path. It's actually a privilege because I've seen a lot of them, but it was a good video. We all worked hard for it, and we hope we do make a change in the public society, in society. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to all the young people. Your presentation and that video was very, very powerful, and I want to present this resolution to Commander Chow on behalf of the whole group, and we have certificates of appreciation, which we will do in the back, but I wanted them to get this recognition out here very quickly and to thank them, and thank the young people for showing us what they have to deal with every day and how they cope. And maybe we can take our inspiration from them. Thank you very much. So I'll go in the back. Get a big picture. Ava will lead you back.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. And our last presentation will be from Councilmember Bernard Parks of the 8th Council District.
Colleagues, we often bring in a lot of people in our community to honor. Today is very special for me and a personal friend, Beverly Todd. I'd ask you to come up, and could I have Team Todd come up behind her? Beverly Todd is an actress, a producer, a People's Choice Award winner, a four-time NAACP Image Award nominee. She was mentored by Sidney Poitier. She has had a long and distinguished career. She starred in television on Broadway, the West End Theater in London, England, and she has starred in over 20 movies opposite some of the industry's brightest stars. Her film credits include the 2005 Oscar-winning film Crash opposite Don Cheadle, The Bucket List opposite Morgan Freeman and Jack Nicholson, Hope and Redemption, The Lena Baker Story opposite Tashina Arnold, the film classic Lean on Me opposite Morgan Freeman, Moving opposite Richard Pryor, Clara's Heart opposite Whoopi Goldberg, Brother John, They Call Me Mr. Tibbs, and The Lost Man, all opposite Sidney Poitier, her mentor. On television, she starred in many guest appearances, most recently in Criminal Minds, The Closer, Lincoln Heights, and Ghost Whispers, to name a few. Ms. Todd is deeply rooted in many aspects of the community with particular focus on youth. She's a co-founder of Stardom Workshop and Showcase, a training ground which prepares young adults and underprivileged children in theater arts. She's conducted a series of workshops for teenage girls to promote positive self-image. She's conducted poetry writing workshops for at-risk youth and Helping Hands, Helping Hands Home for boys and the Kilpatrick School for Boys in Malibu. Today, we're here to celebrate two major accomplishments. She will be co-starring in a role in a film taken from the Tiffany Rubin Story for the Lifetime Network, playing the mother of...
Taraji.
Taraji.
P. Henson.
P. Henson. This movie airs Monday, January 31, 2011, on Lifetime Channel at 9:00 p.m. We're also celebrating her next movie role, which I had the pleasure of seeing recently. I Will Follow, starring opposite Sally Richardson, which opens March 11 in theaters across the country. We have a trailer of the Lifetime Channel movie. I'd like to have that come up at this time.
My son has been stolen from me.
Call this into the FBI. Where are they?
Kobe is in Seoul, Korea.
He's been kidnapped. I'm not going to be patient.
I am going to get my child.
If you get caught, you'll spend serious time in a Korean prison.
I am his mother.
You're gonna lose everything.
I will not be free until Kobe is home with me.
Colleagues, I'd like to present to you a very, very personal friend from the last couple of decades, Beverly Todd.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I would first like to thank the LA City Council for giving me this wonderful honor, but especially to Councilman Bernard Parks for his outstanding contribution to the arts. If it were not for Councilman Bernard Parks, many of the programs in the community would not be possible, programs like Friends 3 Presents: The Spoken Word, the Pan-African Film Festival, and the NAACP Theater Awards, and many, many others. I would like to thank Councilman Parks for his tireless efforts in making these programs possible. Thank you. I also have some friends that are standing with me that I would like to introduce. They are, you know, you need friends when you're going through life, and especially when you're an artist, because it's sometimes very difficult, and you like to know that your friends have your back. So to my right is my dear friend for, since we were infants almost, not quite.
Yes, tricycles.
Tricycles. Judy Pace is also my partner in the spoken word presentations that we do. Willis Edwards, who might know, you all know, without him, nothing happens in LA. Yay, Willis! Babe Evans, who is an entrepreneur, a theater person, she has her own theater company. She and her husband, Art Evans, who is a talented, brilliant actor, is here to support me today. This is Babe. Dion Miall, who is a friend and an architect, if any of you ever need to have your house redone, this is the man to call.
And he's a singer, too.
And he's a singer, too. Thank you, Willis. See, Lewis. A very brilliant singer who recently performed with Shirley Jones, and he got some of the best reviews I've ever seen for a singer. I mean, even people that we all know, his reviews were amazing. Ron Bruington, who also helps make this city rock. Ron, where are you? Ron Bruington?
Jackie DePompaw.
Where is Jackie? Is she here?
Jackie DePompaw.
Jackie DePompaw, oh, there she is. She's my sister. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but I'm a delta, so was she having my little elephant bracelet. And Ian Fox, who is over there, you should be over here, Ian. Just run over here really quickly. Yep, come on. Ian Fox, who anywhere you go in this city, you will see him clicking pictures, and he doesn't want to come over here now, and that's okay. We'll put it aside. We have your picture on a frame, I'm gonna put it up later. District Attorney Carmen Hawkins, city attorney. I'm sorry, well, have I demoted you or raised you?
I represent the city of LA.
She represents the city of LA. Okay. This lady right here, if you ever get in trouble, you want her on your side. Kevin Sazaki, my publicist, and also the publicist for Dion Ward. Kevin, where are you?
Hey, Kevin.
Myrna Williams, who is, she's an extraordinary chef and caterer, so if you ever need a party catered, you need to see Myrna. Did you bring some cards with you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Have I named everybody? Oh, and Jackie?
Jackie Hawthorne.
See, he's giving, Willis made a mistake. Did everybody notice? Willis made a mistake. Jackie...
Hawthorne.
Jackie Hawthorne, Jacqueline Hawthorne, who is here also supporting my back. I think I got everybody? Okay. You know, this is such an honor for me today. Well, first of all, I want to give all my friends an applause. Thank you. Okay, Willis is saying, "Thank you, Mother." I always have to say what Willis says because it's very important. As an artist, we do this work because we love it. Getting paid also helps, but it's basically because we love it and the challenge of it. And what makes it extra special are moments like these, when we are honored for the work that we do and for the work that we do in the community. I will remember this day with pride, and it will always make me smile to know that the LA City Council and my friend, Councilman Bernard Parks, took the time out of your busy schedules trying to hold this city together to honor me, and I'm forever grateful, and I do appreciate it. And I appreciate that you have allowed me these moments to talk. I could talk forever, but I'm not going to.
Thank you.
Don't breathe such sigh of relief. But I just want to say this is a special day that I will always remember, and thank you so very much.
And a couple other council members would like to add their good wishes, Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry?
Beverly and Bernard, thank you for doing this. And Beverly, you're an inspiration, and you're surrounded by people who are bringing that energy and being role models, and I thank you for being who you are and continue to contribute and to work and be on television and in film and to show women that, particularly people in the entertainment industry, because, you know, it's not always very kind to women who are over 35. I know, I know, but thank you anyway. Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Labange is running over.
Everybody, look right there, Betsy, right there. Get that great shot. Bernard, thanks for bringing in such a great woman, a great artist, and congratulate everybody. Look at the lens, Betsy's capturing the camera. What a great day today. Big hand for Miss Todd right there. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Beverly, on behalf of the city council, we'd just like to honor you for all the things you've achieved and what you're going to achieve in the future, but we wanted to highlight your most recent achievements, and that's the Lifetime movie and your new movie coming out, and so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. We'll next go to the items that were called special. Like to begin with item number three, and we'll wait just so we get cleared out. One moment.
Mr. Kukoyan, we're gonna take up item number three first. Very good, sir. Have I recognized Mr. Garcia?
Just asking questions. Thank you. I'd just like to ask the city attorney to come to the table on item number three. Colleagues, this is the vote on the, we've been in court on our medical marijuana ordinance. I know there's been a lot of people who have come up with some really good points, creative ideas about changes that could be made. What I want to know today is, it's my understanding, but I need to hear from the city attorney's office, what the stakes are. Some people have said, well, can't we wait a week, try to change some things? I've always said, and Mr. Reyes has also enforced this too, this is a living, breathing ordinance. We can change things along the way. Much of what we did, the judge said was good, but one piece, he said he wants to, quote unquote, I think it was, "Light a fire under the city and get something in place." My greatest worry is that in our creative thinking, we might have a gap, a time in which the ordinance is thrown out by the judge, we have nothing in place, and we go back to the wild, wild west, and hundreds or a thousand different medical marijuana dispensaries... the wild, wild west and hundreds or a thousand different medical marijuana dispensaries everywhere. So I want to respect a lot what my colleagues are saying and set up a process so that some of the suggestions and ideas that I've just heard about this morning from them might be incorporated into a parallel track. But I guess my question for the city attorney is, if we get off this track, and I've talked to a couple of folks who have voted no in the past, but understand that a no vote today could possibly also leave us with no ordinance for a while, so that they can say, "Look, in my ideal world, I wouldn't be voting for this at all, but I'll hold my nose to be able to at least have something in place." There's other colleagues who have said, "The number is too low, I don't like the process." I want to give space, as your council president, to that ongoing discussion. I know Mr. Reyes, who's done a great job of helping manage that, will allow that to occur as well. My worry and my only main question before we start anything, so that the council understands the stakes, is what if we waited another week? What if we waited two weeks and we worked some of this out? What are the dangers of that? And is there any negative consequence to seeing this now on the second reading, essentially? Because I withheld on last week's vote, the second reading, if we got this through today, we're still able to continue to make changes moving forward, and it doesn't detract from anybody's efforts to do that? Is that an accurate statement?
Good morning, counsel. Council President Garcetti, Jane Usher, City Attorney's Office, with Terry Kaufman-Masias and Dave Michelson, also of our office. I think you've accurately summarized our position, which is, and council members, we disagree with Judge Moore, but he is our judge. He is our judge in the trial court. There are just no two ways about it. Judge Moore has written something along the lines of the following. "As soon as my injunction takes effect, there's nothing preventing any number of collectives or dispensaries from reopening in the city." We don't agree that that's the law, but our judge believes that to be the law. So the moment this injunction takes effect, we will not be able to go to Judge Moore and say, "A hundred, two hundred, a thousand opening, we need your help shutting them down." What he has said as his companion piece is he wants the City Council to amend the ordinance consistent with his order. He's put our feet to the fire. That is what he's done. That's the universe we're working with. So, our office thinks the only prudent thing for the city to do is amend the ordinance so that we have a working document, and whenever the injunction takes effect, we have something lawful that we can enforce.
So it'd be my recommendation, based on that advice colleagues today, that I would urge you to vote yes on this. Those who are opposed to any of these at all, a no vote could actually bring you a lot more than exists today. For those who are opposed, who think there's too few, but want us to maybe concentrate on issues of quality or quantity, but also don't want there to be no laws or regulations on this, a no vote today could also take us into a place where you're not able to achieve that. So my recommendation, colleagues, is for us to vote, from the diversity of opinions that we have shown around this, to pledge to those who are working with us on trying to make this a better ordinance throughout time, to continue to do that. And I know that there are folks who are feeling urgent about this, so it's also our promise that that's not something that pushes it off for months. That's going to be immediate conversation, but at least we have the insurance policy in place when the injunction comes down, because I don't want to see if the judge decides, "Well, they're just dragging their feet, the injunction, and nothing in place." That's really chaos for you, no matter what side of this issue you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have, you know, worked really hard from the very beginning to try to see if we can't craft an ordinance that works, obviously legally, but I fear what we have before us today is an ordinance with this lottery that is not really going to the heart and spirit of the Compassionate Use Act that Californians passed, which is making sure patients, you know, have safe access to medicine that we know is, you know, quality medicine, that these clinics are operated in a honest, professional manner, and I, you know, I have never really liked this lottery idea. I don't know what that gets us. I don't know if that gets us, you know, our best, you know, way to really provide what I think we're required to provide by the law of the state of California, which is safe access, and not just safe access to the clinic, but certainly access to safe medical cannabis. So I guess what I would ask today is, if we pass this today, you know, can we make future amendments? Can we change the way that we allow clinics to operate? Or do we have to stick with the 100 that we pull from a hat? And can we add more after we pass this about the 100? And then, you know, colleagues, we have Montel Williams with us today, and if it would be okay with the rest of you, I think we would really benefit from listening to some of his concerns about what we're attempting to do today, and I would actually like to have him come to the table and speak to us on this measure, but I'd also like you to answer the couple of questions that I just asked.
Thank you, councilwoman. So here's the position the city of Los Angeles has, the box we've been put in by Judge Moore, quite honorably in his view. The minute this bond is posted, it's roughly $350,000, this judge's view is, the minute that bond is posted, anyone can open up in the city. The process to close an operation that opens takes anywhere from six months to two years. Our resources are tapped in all departments, as you know.
Point of order, Mr. President. Point of order.
I just want to make sure, I'm not doing this because I want to stop the discussions, but I just want clear advice from our city attorney's office. We are in litigation, it's ongoing litigation. Anything we say here can be used in these proceedings. I just want to make sure and assure that you feel comfortable that we will not put us, this would not harm the city's interest if we continue to have this discussion in open session. I'm not advocating either way, I just want to make sure our city attorneys are comfortable with what we're doing here.
So, councilmen, we'll try to, thank you for that reminder. We'll try to jump in if we think the conversation crosses a line that will hurt the city's interest in the litigation. To that point, we've read the lawsuits up and down the state and the strategies up and down the state, and I can tell you that the number-one strategy used in every jurisdiction and in our city most especially has been to delay the adoption of an ordinance. That has been the...
Did you answer my questions?
I'm so sorry, I thought I needed to respond to the councilman. Yes, I'll answer your question. As a legislative body, you have the power to amend, enact, and new. That power is never dissipated. That power never changes. This judge is asking you to amend the ordinance consistent with his order, and he is, if you will, tapping his fingers, waiting for us to accomplish that. He's shown recent impatience with us, and we're trying to honor his order.
I guess, and specifically, we've got an ordinance that says 100 that we draw out of a hat or a lottery. Can we add more that are chosen in a different manner?
Councilwoman, the number-one ruling from this court was, you have to have a level playing field for which collectives can open. You have to have the same test, the same rule, everybody has to be subject to the same standard, and if you have a rational basis, if you have a reason for your standard, your test, your rules, and it's open and fair to all, that's what he's asking for. Two different tests, some subject to one, others subject to another, that, of course, would violate that precept that everybody is subject to the same playing rules.
So for us, it's a date.
He has invited a date. He has signaled to us in every hearing where we've appeared before him and in writing, "City of Los Angeles, use a date."
Councilmember David Michelson with the city attorney's office, I'll add a little to that as well. The original ordinance that was adopted by your council almost a year ago had as sort of a key component this concept of collectives who would be grandfathered, collectives who were opened up back in 2007. This ordinance that was presented to you last week and is before you today for a second reading is not only consistent with the judge's recent ruling, it also stays true to that concept of focusing on collectives who would be grandfathered. So those collectives who can establish that they were open prior to the date, which is September 14th, 2007, will have that opportunity to be grandfathered, to the extent that there's more than 100 of them who jumped that hurdle, the lottery simply will determine which of the 100 will go forward to Building Safety to look for their pre-inspection to be cleared, and will provide the order for that 100. So it stays true to this concept of the grandfathering of those collectives.
I'll press my button again.
Okay. Yep.
Well, I thank the council president for opening this discussion with that statement. That is what weighs very heavy on my mind. I'd like to ask the city clerk if they can come to the table. Colleagues, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I understand, for four years, I had hearings where I had people suffering from AIDS, people suffering from a whole range of ailments, that spoke to why this is important to them. I've visited these facilities on Robertson and throughout the city. I saw what patients needed, the elderly in their respective place to be able to continue the next day with this medication. That I understand. But what's in front of us, colleagues, is this. The judge wants us to create a level playing field. The judge struck an order that said, "What you initially started is not accurate, it's not correct, it's not fair, it's not legal." So the response from our team, the city family, is, "The only level playing field that we can work with right now is a lottery." And I understand that is not fair to many of the operators who are doing the right thing. I understand that. But this is our challenge, colleagues. Item 13 is about bringing money to the table so that we can hire individuals to implement the ordinance should it pass today. In other words, we don't have the staff to even implement the ordinance that we are, hopefully, will be on today. So my question to you is this, and colleagues, this is the will of the body. My question to you is this. Do we want to open up the doors again and let all of those who will gain the system, all of those who are using this process for their own financial gain without any care or concern for those who need it for real medical reasons, because they know they're going to make a lot of money, and they know it's going to take us another year to catch up to them, they're going to make thousands and thousands of dollars, and they're going to hurt our communities all over again. Is that the environment we will create if we do not pass an ordinance? My humble suggestion to you is this, that we pass the ordinance as much as it hurts, but we start very quickly putting together a methodology, amendments that speaks to quality, what is in this particular, whatever's being offered by these entities. Sorry? It doesn't do it, I understand that. But the reason why it doesn't do it, because our staff told us, "We won't be able to perform because we don't have the staff to actually implement. We do not have the staff to deal with quality control. We do not have the staff to take on the thousands of applications that begins to discriminate between whose quality and who isn't, what variables we put in place, what weights we put, and how do we measure those weights, and how do we make a decision? The judge will want to see that methodology, will want to be fair, will want to be legal, and we cannot do it at this moment." But time is running out. Time is running out. Many of, we've had people die over this, we're getting gang members that are busting into these places, we have people who are coming in, youngsters, minors, who are going into the alleyways, smoking this stuff, and just destroying much of what we have achieved in terms of public safety. But yet, there are people who are hurting who medically need it, I know that. So colleagues, these past four years have been a very, very difficult time for me on this ordinance, because we want to do what's fair. Judge has put us into a box. We need to perform. But why can't we allow this to go forward? Let's work on the amendments as quick as we can. Let's define what it will cost us and start building up the infrastructure, not only in payments, but in how we facilitate the process, how we create the weights, how we measure quality, and how do we enforce, so that Building Safety, City Clerk's Office, City Attorney's Office has the capacity to implement. And that is the key here. How do we implement? And the lottery is what we can do now, as much as it hurts.
Councilman, thank you for that. I want the council to understand that you have done, you've gone a very great distance to get quality dispensaries under your ordinance. You have gone a very great distance. You have a tremendous number of operating conditions that will make these locations consistent with their neighborhoods, you have sensitive distance requirements, you have annual books and record-keeping and auditing requirements. So you have built into your ordinance a tremendous amount of operation and quality control, and I wouldn't want you to think that your ordinance was shy of those provisions. They are in there. Councilman Ball?
Colleagues, again, my plea to you is, let's listen to our staff. Let's listen to city clerk. Let them know that we are trying to help them as well. Thank you for passing item 13. It gives us resources to get the personnel to do just what this ordinance can achieve. We take a step further, we need more personnel, we need more quality control, we need measures, we need methodologies, we need variables that allow us to understand who is actually going to be consuming the substance that we allowed, and we don't have a mechanism yet to find out what's in it, but we could get there. Allow this ordinance to pass through so that we can get there. Allow us to generate the resources by passing this so we can get to that threshold, and maybe in three months, maybe in six months, we can come back and get there. And that's all I'm asking, is for us to allow us to keep our neighborhoods safe by voting yes today. Thank you.
Councilman, when would you like, we have representatives from the city clerk's office, from Building and Safety, and from LAPD who want to speak to the ordinance. When would you like to hear their remarks?
As soon as my colleagues feel it's, I want them to get their questions answered, but I would love to hear from you how this ordinance allows you to perform.
Honorable counsel, June Lagme, City Clerk's Office, my office is speaking solely and specifically on the resources that we're asking for in item 13 before you. It has been a long four years, and for four years, the city clerk's office was tasked with the initial step of this laborious process, the intake of applications. Essentially, what item three does before you is, as far as we're concerned, puts all the work we have done to one side and sets us back to square one. We do not know the total amount of applications that are going to come in, but we strongly suspect it's going to be overwhelming. Due to the current financial situation, we don't have anywhere close to the resources we did four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, to handle this onslaught. So item 13 is a modest request for putting a threshold of $16,200 that would allow us a little bit of flexibility to hire the temporary staff necessary for the inputting of the initial applications, and we would stay in close touch with you should the amount be less or more. My executive officer may offer some comments at this time.
Holly Walcott, Executive Officer, Office of the City Clerk. Currently, the registration fee, I know this question has been asked in the past, the city clerk's registration fee is $324. How the $16,200 was reached was just simply by assuming 50 filers. We anticipate that there could be anywhere from 200 to 800, and that's based on the number of hardships filed between 2007 and 2009, when there were 783 hardship filers. And the number of IECO filers in 2007 was 230. If you add up all these numbers, it could come up as high as 1,013, so we don't know. We do know that with even the 200 that we have been dealing with over the last two years, we receive 50 to 100 phone calls every single day. So the workload is increasing... So the workload is increasing. We are opening the doors again. We support the lottery only from an administrative effort, because we do not have any other way of prioritizing the grandfathering of collectives.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, just one question about the timing. If we were to delay this for a few days or a week, to look at some of the new ideas that have been presented to us recently, and in particular by Montel Williams, and a new model that is being used elsewhere in the state. What's the chance that something dramatic changes, as you said? Is it very likely? Is this bond going to be produced a month from now or two days from now? Do we have a sense? And what's the timing on this injunction? When does it go into effect?
Councilman, the injunction, per the judge's own words, will take effect the moment the bond is posted. The bond is relative to what it could have been, a very low amount. It's $350,000. So the moment that's posted, at least according to the trial court judge, it's open season in the City of Los Angeles for collectives. That's just the reality we're facing. We did ask him to give us a different reality. He declined. So the collectives now are holding the cards. They can post the bond, or they can file briefs to seek to get the bond reduced or its terms changed. The judge has left it at their discretion, at their choice, and the City of Los Angeles has no say in this.
If they say filed it on Monday, could we pass an ordinance on Tuesday, and then it would only apply to whomever had applied on Monday? How would that work?
So let's keep in mind the timetable of our ordinance adoption process. With an urgency clause, we then get the mayor's signature, and we post, and we publish, and we take effect immediately. So let's just say that's a 10-day process. So whatever day you might pass an ordinance, I would ask you to add 10 days if you adopted an urgency clause, and I would ask you to assume an additional anywhere from 40 to 45 days if you do not adopt an urgency clause. So we are poised for, we are poised to be unprotected. So that is why we're here so quickly.
Even under the current circumstances, if we passed it today, we even could have a little window where we're unprotected, based on what you're saying.
We could have a little window. I think the shorter that window is, the more likely it is that our resources will be up to the job.
So if we wanted to create a new model, and I hope at some point we'll hear from Montel Williams about his new model, what would the best process be for us to attempt to do that?
The best process would be for you to enact what's pending before you, and then at any time that you want to direct this office or any of our colleague offices in City Hall to work on a different program, we'd be more than happy to start that.
But from a legal perspective, you feel that we're compelled to pass this today to protect the city and what we're attempting to do?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Alakom?
Councilmembers, we struggled with this issue for many years, and we began the discussion with a desire to achieve the greatest quality in the provision of the service that we could achieve. I remember distinctly on your first report, that was Mr. Reyes's, that was the heart of Mr. Reyes's presentation, that we need to provide quality medicinal marijuana to those who desire it, who are seriously ill. But somewhere along the way, we got bogged down in legal issues. And I'm here to tell you that while we have to respond to those legal issues, and we want to meet those challenges, those aren't the only issues we're concerned with. So let's not forget the original discussion that we had, that whatever we create that addresses our legal concerns, I think we have a long way to go. I'm particularly concerned that by doing a lottery, we are not able to select who the best providers will be. We're just going to give them a number, and they get selected, and we could literally end up with the absolute worst providers of the bunch. And so I'm not very pleased with the notion of the lottery. However, I recognize that it has been compelled by the legal process that we've ended up in. I think we made some mistakes early on. And in order to correct those mistakes, we are trying to drive this through this legal process. But I think we need to, in many respects, get back to our fundamental mission, which is to abide by the law in a way that those who are seriously ill, who desire to use medicinal marijuana, as stated in the intent of the law, have the opportunity to do so in a way that we don't go out of control in the City of Los Angeles. So whatever happens with the vote on 100 to be participate or to select 100 through a lottery process, I believe we need to take an additional step, and that is to look forward, regardless of what we do. And that is to put together a panel of experts who are, not who are currently necessarily selling marijuana, but experts who can tell us what is the best way to provide this service. Doctors who provide these services. Experts who can tell us, can we improve the quality of the service to ensure that it is being done with the real spirit of the law in mind? And experts who can tell us about the quality of the product. Because right now, we know that there are, some of the sales of marijuana, the product is tainted with pesticides and other chemicals that are detrimental to the same people we are trying to provide this service to, those who are seriously ill. And so I would like to recommend that we establish an advisory body moving forward to monitor what we are doing, but also to, and to study what is going on elsewhere in the world with regard to this subject, and to come back with a report in six months or a year, whatever the designation may be. Let me just offer six months, to suggest to us how we can improve this system, to ensure that it is driven by quality, not the legal minimum standard, but quality of the service provision, and quality of the intended object, the seriously ill, and quality of the product itself, to ensure that it is not degraded by access to a product that is produced illegally and with pesticides or other chemicals, or other things that are detrimental to the health of the patient. So I would offer that as an amendment to whatever motion is pending. It's a friendly amendment, and it seeks to put us back on the track of defining quality as our primary goal, as Mr. Reyes was speaking to. I, Mr. Chair, Ms. Hahn asked if Mr. Montel Williams could address the audience. I don't know how you want to handle that, but...
Any one of you on your time can bring him forward as a witness. You're over if you don't mind pressing your button. I know Ms. Hahn's queued up, but Mr. Wezar is our next speaker for the first time, so you can do that on your own time, absolutely. That would be in order. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I strongly believe that we are at a critical point today in terms of the City of Los Angeles getting a handle on medical marijuana dispensaries in the City of Los Angeles. And we've come a long way. Not everyone is happy, but we've compromised amongst each other here in this horseshoe. We've compromised with the patients and the advocates. We've compromised with communities. And yes, this legislation, this ordinance, is not perfect. There's a lot of holes in it. Doesn't speak to quality of the medicine, doesn't speak to transportation. I mean, you could just throw a lot of stuff with it. But it was a song and dance that was created out of a flawedly-written state law, and it was a song and dance, given that the federal government is still saying, no matter if it's medical marijuana or regular marijuana, it's still legal. And it was a song and dance that we did to ensure that we balance the needs of access and local community needs. Now, if we don't act today, we're going to try the patience of those council members who have been trying to find a solution, who have bent over backwards to all sides of this debate. And I predict that if we don't act today, we're going to be in a situation where we were before we started discussing this ordinance. It's going to be very easy for some of us to say, "Let's just go the county route," and say that all dispensaries, there's be no medical marijuana dispensaries in the City of Los Angeles. It's going to be very easy for our communities now to come to these chambers again and say, "We've had it with the impacts that these are causing to our community when we go up to 800 or so again." I say that we act today because no matter what details we talk about, whether it's a lottery and not a lottery, whether there's 100 or 70 or 186, there will always be access. And I don't care who operates these, as long as they are responsible operators, whether they're pre-Ico or post-Ico, it doesn't matter. We just want to have access, and that will exist no matter how we do it here. Those are little technicalities. All we have to care about is the process fair. But these little details that we are now fumbling with don't matter. There will be access, but what we need to do is make sure that we do something and do it quickly. Because in my community of Eagle Rock, when we have illegal dispensaries gladly operating, and they know we can't do anything about it, it is affecting the quality of life, and the sooner we put this genie back in the bottle, we're close to it, it's going to improve the quality of life for thousands and thousands of agolinos. And no matter what little detail we do here and there, there will always be access. We shouldn't be concerned about that. We've said it very loud and clear, over and over, that the majority of council members here want to provide access, and it will be there. These little details that we're messing with right now is going to blow up this whole ordinance, and that's going to put us in a worse situation. Colleagues, I urge you to adopt this. It's not good. I don't like this ordinance overall. But we need to come to a solution, and this is the best thing we can do right now for a solution. We're close. Let's do it. Let's get a handle of the situation, and we have to move in a different direction later on. Let's do that. But for right now, we need to put a cap on this problem.
Mr. Wesson.
Council President.
Hold on one second. Just, if there wasn't a question asked, just if you don't mind, just, Mr. Wesson.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to request that we hear from Montel Williams on my time.
Okay. Mr. Williams, if you'd like to come forward to... Absolutely.
Thank you, and thank you, members of the City Council, and thank you, members of the public that are here. I listened to this conversation just now, and every one of the City Council members who stood up is very passionate about the fact that for the last four years, you have worked as hard as you can to see if you can satisfy a million different people who have come before you and asked you for some help. And throughout this conversation, I've heard terms like, "We should do this as quick as we can. We have to do this now, or it's not going to happen." Or, "Our feet are being held to the fire," is a term that I've heard. I gotta, just for a second, explain, when I hear things like, "My feet are being held to the fire," let me explain to you what that means to me. We fill out these terms here about patients very, very quickly and easily. It comes off your tongue very simply. I am a patient. I have been public, and one of the only people in this country who has really, literally had the intestinal fortitude to step up and say to everyone, from Maine to Maryland to New York to New Jersey to Arizona to Mexico, every state that's passed an ordinance or passed a bill for medicinal marijuana and access for patients, I have tried to be involved in and will continue to be involved in because it's about patients. Holding feet to the fire, let me explain something to you. For the last 10 years, from morning till night, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, I have absolute neuropathic pain through my feet, my shins, my side and my face, all plotted and tracked everywhere from USC, UCLA, UC San Francisco, Johns Hopkins, Harvard, and the Nobel Institute. Every one of these places that I go to see doctors, every single one of those doctors has recommended for me to continue using marijuana, because I came to a point that no longer opiates do to it. Last night, I left here, the City Council, at 5:00. Had to go to a meeting, and I'm sorry, because of my MS, I also suffer from extreme depression, something I can't deal with. And what you're getting from me is a called emotional lullaby, because I have no control over my emotions when they get going. Last night, I left here, had to go to an office. My own mistake. I walked out of the office, tried to find my car and driver, my phone died. Had to walk the 14th street box. Let's explain something to you. You walk in and out of here every day and don't think about your feet. Mine, I have to think about every second of the day before I even open my mouth to talk. Last night, I had no medication on me when I left, because I ran out. Last night was a really miserable evening for me. Last night, I could have picked up the phone and called any one of the dispensaries that you now want to put in the lottery, and gone to them and asked them for some medication, and I can get it. But I'm going to tell you something. I'm not knocking all of them, because I have not been to all 850. But there wasn't one I was going to go buy something from last night, because the last time I got something here, I got something with butane in it. Let me also tell you about butane. For a person who has a neurological disease, it can almost throw you into a seizure. So what are you going to do? You're going to open up today and vote and say that we're going to limit the number, because I get it. I'm traveling all over the country, testifying and attempting to bring safe access for patients. On Monday, I will be in Maryland. On Tuesday, I'll be in Delaware, meeting with governors and representatives of both legislators on this issue. But here, today, you may pass a bill that says, "We're going to try to clean up Los Angeles dispensaries, and we're going to let all certain group apply because they've been members in good standing," and these are who you're going to put in your lottery. And there's add after add after add in here. I'm not saying that every operator in this town is a bad operator, but nowhere in your bill have you put anything in here that talks about how you're going to determine out of that whoever applies for this lottery, who's a quality operator and who's not. And at the end of the day, you pass that bill today, yeah, you may solve a couple of problems with people who yell at you and causing some difficulty because you need to rush, but you're not solving a problem for any patient. The bills were written, this state law was written, to provide safe access to patients. And unfortunately, I've been involved in the lobbying for this effort all over this country, and have assisted the hijacking of this effort by a lot of organizations who aren't doing this because they give a damn about me or any other patient, they're doing this because they're trying to make money. You have an opportunity today to do a couple of things. I had a really wonderful opportunity to talk to Councilman Alzon, and to Councilman Minam Hahn, and to Mr. Kretz, and I also spoke to Councilman Wesson. I wish I would have gotten the opportunity to see you all yesterday. And unfortunately, why did I jump in here at the last minute? Because it wasn't until the last minute that you could actually get through this ordinance and understand what it is that you have here. And when you look at the ordinance, and you look at some of the things that have been written about it, one was that the city's medical marijuana ordinance was adopted on January 26, 2010, and became legally effective on June 7, 2010. It was enacted as a public safety measure to enable safe access to medical marijuana while regulating the number of operations of collectives in the city. The first line here is, "Safe access." Not speed it up, get it done, not get it done because we have to rush and make sure that we do. This is safe access, so why not stop for a second and take the time? Five days. I heard the City Attorney say that if we do this, if you miss it by one day, it's going to move it by 10. Six, 11 days. If you do it today, it's still going to take 10. Why not take a minute and just recognize that possibly there may not have been some things considered when this ordinance was written? Think about the fact that right now, even if you go to a lottery and you select from the existing dispensaries that are here, these are the people that you've... the existing dispensaries that are here, these are the people that you've complained about. But you'll select from them anyway. That's fine. Maybe there's an opportunity to set aside, I'm just throwing that idea, set aside a group of those so that you can put together a panel to vet out and make sure that the people that are running these new collectives have quality and quality access and safe access to patients in mind. And I'm not talking about being able to walk up to the storefront and walk in the door without getting shot. I'm talking about from the person vending, who's giving me information and telling me that a particular breed may, brand may work, and they have no idea what they're talking about. If we're going to do this and provide safe access, then let's roll up your sleeves. I'm bouncing around this country, getting at different municipalities, offering advice, and a lot of them are open. You don't have to just take them out. There are a lot of people out here who are coming to the table now that could give you advice on how to set this up. You have 100 possible candidates that will participate in a lottery. Why not make the lottery for 90? And I should also back and say, even in your own write-up of the bill, you say that the candidates for the lottery are candidates which, up to this time, were illegal. So you're going to take the same people, and that's going to be the people that you're going to now slice it down to and allow that 100 to actually administer this ordinance. There are a couple of things that you can do. One is, take the time to think about Representative Alcon's suggestion of putting together a committee that can vet out your applicants. The conversation took place here about the fact that there's no funding to vet out the number of applicants. It's not going to be here tomorrow. So if you're going to have to take a break, take a break and write an ordinance that I think will make the difference in what you wanted to achieve, and Mr. Smith said, no, but what you wanted to achieve, and that is, to make sure that patients have safe access. I would say to you, sir, that if one of these is one of the hundreds, I, as a patient, don't have safe access. And right now, you have no way, shape, or form of determining or stopping any one of these from applying.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Appreciate your time very much. Mr. Corcoran is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the City Attorney's Office to come back up, please. All right. The...
Councilwoman Jane Asher, so sorry. It's your clock. Use your clock, but I hope somebody will ask me about the provisions that already are in the ordinance for testing and ensuring...
I'm going to come to that.
Very great.
First of all, on the bond, the trigger date for the ruling is the posting of the bond. It's $350,000. Why hasn't it been posted already?
That I can't answer. I haven't...
Is there any impact that the posting of the bond would have five minutes after we vote today or next week or whatever? What would be the impact of the posting of the bond following the final vote on this ordinance?
If the ordinance is effective, if the ordinance has taken effect, we will be able to use the terms of the ordinance to start implementing and enforcing and closing if you're not following the rules.
Okay. Suppose there's a couple-day lag time. Suppose that we pass an ordinance, there's a doy in getting it signed, something, a bond is filed in the interim. What happens?
Now, I'm looking at a crystal ball, and it's imperfect, but I think this is what happens. I think the judge salutes the city of LA, thanks us for actually acting and upfiling his wishes, and he helps us.
Great. Okay. So now, if we proceed today with this ordinance, and I think, by the way, there would be unanimity in agreeing that the ordinance that's before us is not a perfect ordinance. I think we could probably get a 15-0 vote on that. But assuming that we proceed with this ordinance as is, would there be anything stopping us from adding additional restrictions on operations following the passage of this ordinance?
Councilman, there never would be.
Provided it's applied uniformly.
Exactly right.
That's the judge's only concern. We could apply, whether it's 100 or more or less, we could apply uniform restrictions on operations going forward.
That's right.
Okay. Now, what would be the impact of this lottery and granting operation rights to 100 providers? Would there be any reliance argument? Would there be any vested right? Would there be any grandfathering right? So that in some future ordinance or revision of this ordinance, could we modify that number? Make it 125, add an additional lottery? Make it 75, because of some restriction on operating that we might impose later? In other words, can we change this after enacting this?
So I have two thoughts on that point. One is, the ordinance itself says in several places, "No vested rights, no guarantees." So it contains all of that kind of language. We happen to have a judge who's a pretty sympathetic and reasonable guy. If somebody, if a collective, a dispensary, has gotten considerably far down the road in the process that this ordinance permits, expenditures of real funds, acts taken in real reliance, I do think this judge will be sympathetic to those. But as you'll hear in a few minutes from Building and Safety, our pace is going to be at the rate of 20 a month. That is, we'll be inspecting at that rate. So that should give you an idea of how deep our feet are into this version.
Okay. Well, I'm going to close by asking you to talk about quality provisions and operation restrictions in the existing ordinance. I'd like you to comment on those. As you said at the outset, what we have now, with the understanding that, as I understand it, we can always add more, we could modify them in a future ordinance, but I would like you to comment upon what is in the ordinance now. But before you do, I would just like to say, as a comment, colleagues, that this has been a discussion, Mr. Williams used the phrase "at the last minute" and "rushing" and so on a few times. The truth is, this has been a dialogue that's been going on long before I was on the council. And we have been working on this, hobbling this together, responding to litigation, getting analysis from our staff, getting work done by the clerk's office, getting legal advice from the city attorney now for a very long time. This is not a last-minute thing. And I would submit that this council does not do its best work when we operate on the fly. We don't do our best work when we say, "I have another idea for how to make it better." Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good here, or even the adequate, or even the, you know, maybe a little less than adequate. But let's, in my view, I think we should proceed today with the proviso that, as Mr. Garcetti has indicated and as Mr. Alcon has suggested, and I think the idea of an advisory committee is an excellent one, I think we should move forward with that, let's by all means continue to work on making it better. But I, for one, am not comfortable with opening it up to the Wild West again. Already in my district, I have post-Ico illegal operators who are already redecorating and remodeling their shops, ready to reopen. So, you know, let's get what we have in place and then work on making it better. And then, if you could, please, Ms. Asher, respond to that.
Councilman, I will. I'm so glad Mr. Williams came today because he again reminds us of why we're all here, and it's pretty darn compelling. One thing our judge was very appreciative of is that previous to this go-round, you had held 16 public hearings. So we really have been out there in years past, and we've done that again. We've probably had an additional three or four. But here we go. You have a page of what are called pre-inspection requirements, and these are building standards that every collective will meet, including distances from sensitive uses. But it goes beyond that. We will have required exterior building lighting, required requirements regarding illumination, windows, roofs, exterior hatches, building safety. So, Councilman, there's an awful lot. There's a page worth of building safety features. We then go on to have two pages, a little bit more, two and a half, of operating conditions. So the collectives will have to follow equal level standards for operation. Everything from alarms on the premises, closed circuit monitoring hours, ages of who can be on the site. We have two and a half pages of that. And then, I think what Mr. Williams will be appreciative of, and there are very few of us who spend our days reading the ordinance over and over again, but there's a half a page or more devoted to audit and testing of the product. Because, Council, we don't have what would be the equivalent of the county health department in the city. The way we address the auditing and testing and inspection of the product is you put in a requirement that collectives must test their product, have it certified by an independent lab. And I wish to heck that we had already gotten to the stage where this had been implemented and is already happening. Because for roughly the year since we last spoke about all of this and enacted the ordinance, we haven't gotten this provision implemented. And I hate to heck to think that patients are receiving untested product. And I'd like us to get to the point where this provision was real.
Thank you. Ms. Perry? All right, Ms. Perry calls a question. Is there an objection?
Yes.
Okay. Is there an objection? This is a vote is required call in question. It means to end debate, not on the actual item before us. It's just ending debate. Since folks have not spoken for a second time, it requires a 10-person vote. Please open the roll. A yes vote is to end debate, a no vote is to not. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
Okay. That does not carry. Ms. Han.
Thank you. If one of our concerns is, by not passing this ordinance today, that, as members have described it, it opens up to the wild, wild west, what would be the, could we not just today take a separate vote on another moratorium on any newly opened medical marijuana clinics? Can we not do that? Also, you know, I've read the ordinance about the testing and audits, and basically, it sounds like we're leaving it up to the medical marijuana clinic to send their product out for testing at some lab, which I understand are not certified, and then we're leaving it up to them to post where they got it tested and what the results are. And do we have staff to basically monitor these operations and check for ourselves whether this product is clean, is safe, and would not cause, you know, extra harm, as Mr. Williams was talking about today? And I'm concerned about, you know, why we're not, you know, our whole ordinance, I feel like we're basing it on, obviously, legal challenges. But it's also, you know, a lot of what we're doing here today is because we don't have the resources to properly monitor, properly assess, properly analyze applications. Why are we not charging a more significant fee for applications that come into the city? Other cities are charging more money. This idea about only cost recovery, I don't feel like we have a true sense of what this is costing our city. And we should be talking about adding employees to implement this program. And apparently, that study is not done yet on what our cost recovery is, but that's bogus. And can we, at this point, if we continue with the lottery, can we change the criteria for how you put yourself in the position to be in the lottery? I know right now, it's date, it's no criminal background, a few things, but can we, at this point, add some criteria to how you get into the lottery? And again, I just really want to thank Montel Williams for coming here today. It was very, he's a patient advocate. I mean, he's a patient advocate because he is a patient. And I don't think any of us know what our patients are going through. And we started this with listening to the patient advocates. I would dare say that the patients don't like anything that's ended up in this ordinance. So maybe we've had 16 hearings, but I don't think this ordinance reflects the patient's concern about how we're crafting this ordinance.
So, Councilwoman, if I forget your questions, you'll re-up me. Let's, I'm not going to take them in order because I'm looking at the auditing and testing provision. I hope you'll be reassured. The requirement is that there be an independent certified laboratory provide the test, so it is not in the hands of the collectives to say whether their product meets the test or not. But moving on from that, you asked a question about could you add additional...
Are these labs certified? There are certified labs.
They are coming online, and there are county labs and state labs, whether the collectives would have access to them, could make arrangements with them. We can't speak to, we don't control those lab facilities. But we have already heard, while we were in the process of adopting the ordinance, laboratories who wanted to get into this business and they wanted this ordinance to be written this way so that they could have a quality standard. They didn't want it to be a false standard, if you will. They wanted it to be verifiable, as did this body. But moving off of that, you asked if we could add other things to what I'll call the grandfathering. The court has been really harsh on this point and really clear, almost to the point of brow-beating us, but in a very pleasant way. He has said, "City attorneys, read the Duke's case. A date. Give me a date. I want it to be level. I want it to be equal. I want everybody to have the same opportunity." Since December 10, since that ruling came down, we know that all of you have been looking for ways to identify a level playing field. The judge has been very clear with the level playing field standard that he wants us to bring back to him. More than that, I can't tell you, we've looked for other verifiable level playing fields...
Would an RFP fall under that?
Conditional use process or request for proposal. That would be a completely different direction than where the council's been in the past, but what you want to be mindful of...
But would that be legal? It would be a fair playing field?
I think we'd have to take a really serious look and do our very best to write something that, what we'll focus on in any amendment, anything downstream, is something that's quite objective, a standard that's incredibly objective. The minute we add subjective to it, I do feel that we will be right back on the judge's radar. But in the meantime, we need something to protect the city of Los Angeles. There's been lots of talk about real fees. If Councilwoman Reyes will forgive me, I'll dial us back to a year ago, that phase was supposed to have happened. In other words, when the ordinance was adopted, you all also adopted requirements that the city departments come back to you with those monitoring and implementing fees. And, Councilman, we haven't done it. And so you're asking us to do it again, and there is no time like the present for us to do that.
What about a moratorium?
Here's the issue with a moratorium. There are questions. I'm not going to, I don't know where Councilwoman Weisar is, but I'm not going to jeopardize our legal record by saying what we think the answer is on these questions. There are questions about whether the city of Los Angeles can enact a moratorium on a topic where it previously enacted one. We think the answer is twofold. Yes, because we've had a clear change of circumstance, and secondarily, this is not a zoning measure, and so some of the state law and requirements regarding zoning or moratoriums do not apply. But for your purposes, the real debilitating feature of a moratorium is, if it sets a bar that has discretion and that doesn't treat people equally, that moratorium will fail, not because it's a moratorium, but because it denies them equal protection. So for example, if you said...
But if we're afraid that new ones cropping up, so to speak, a moratorium on any new opening...
Well, if you were to say, okay. If you were to say, for example, a moratorium on someone new opening, I can guarantee you as sure as I'm sitting here that those collectives that open will claim, "We were open previously. We're not new. We're not newbies. We're reopening, redecorating, re-upping because of the judge's order. We only closed because the city of LA told us to close. We're not new." And we have about, I can't remember... And we have about, I can't remember Holly Walcott's testimony, but we have something like 800 who fit that prescription.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Han. We'll go to Mr. Alarcon next. If you want to press your button again. Mr. Alarcon?
Councilmembers, counting votes is probably the most pragmatic things that we learn in politics. There seems to be a desire to move this forward, but I would only ask that we anticipate the future and take advantage of an opportunity to improve upon what we may do today. In that regard, you've heard me speak about an advisory body, so to solidify my amendment, what I'd like to do is ask that we ask the CLA to come back with a report within 45 days as to how we would establish an advisory body to drive quality in our medicinal marijuana program, to ensure that the licensing process takes it to the next level of quality improvement. So the first thing that we would be asking of the CLA is to come back with a report on how to establish an advisory panel of experts that we could decide on the composition of. But secondly, I would like us to consider expanding the pool only to the extent that we anticipate another round down the line, to allow for 10 additional slots that is driven by the recommendations of the advisory committee, to put substance and also to provide us with an opportunity to demonstrate that we can do a better job. At any point, if we're not satisfied with the product, we can pull the plug on this. So what I would, and what I am recommending is that we establish an advisory body to give us an understanding of how we might do our system better. I see that as distinctly separate from the 100 that are moving forward. It is sort of the second generation of our program. We've done this with other programs. We've established programs, and then we came back and said, "Well, we can do this better. Let's set in motion a process for us to figure out how to do it better." And that's all I'm saying. One of the reasons I do that is because the group that we are now allowing to participate in the lottery, first of all, is not the entire group out there that are providing services. There may be a program in Chicago that's doing a better job than any of the lottery people are doing now. So I would be willing to support moving forward with the 100, but I anticipate that we're going to have many problems with regard to the quality of service. And so I would like to ask for us to support a second phase. And in the second phase, we provide for 10 additional slots, and by establishing an RFP process that is recommended by the advisory committee, we would be driving quality instead of accepting by chance who the providers are. I think it gives us an opportunity to work with what is a budding industry, if you will. Sorry, Mr. West, that couldn't, that's the first word that came to mind. I didn't have to do it, but it was the first word that came to mind. I apologize. And establish it, if, I believe that what we are doing is not perfect. It is our best effort after all this time, but I think we can do better. So I would like to ask for a second on establishing an advisory committee with a report back from the CLA with-
A second from Ms. Han?
-an addition of 10 slots to consider for the second round sometime in the future, maybe a year from now.
Okay. We have a second for Ms. Han. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
I'd like to call the question.
All right. Mr. Clerk, the question has been called again by Mr. Reyes.
This is an amendment.
This is as it is.
Is there an objection? Is there an objection?
I just asked the question, is there a legal impediment for us now adding 10 new people into-
Okay, then we can't do that without, the question's been called.
The question, I'm sorry.
All right. The question's been called. All right. So open the roll on the call to the question, please.
There's no question.
All right. There's no objection, so we don't have to open the roll on that, I guess. We already did it anyway. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Did you, you object, Ms. Han?
This doesn't require two.
We called the question. That's what's on the table now, is that we called the question. So we have to vote on that. Is there, I just need to know for the record, is there an objection to that or not?
Just vote yes.
All right. There's an objection to that. So then we, do we have to vote now? Now we vote. Open the roll on the call to the question. A yes vote means to end the debate. Mr. Clerk, close the roll.
Tabulate. Eight ayes, four noes.
Okay. That passes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now let, Mr. Clerk, please review for the body what is before us right now so we can take the next vote.
Madam President, before us, we have both the ordinance as presented, as well as the Alarcon Han motion.
All right. Why don't we take them one at a time, first, excuse me, one person at a time, Mr. Garcetti and then Mr. Weezer? Mr. Garcetti, did you have a question?
I have a question for a second.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, okay.
I was on the queue for a second time. I mean, I would have agreed with it, but I think if it's only an eight-person vote, it's a 10 vote if people have not yet both spoken for the first and second time, so it needed 10 votes. I'm just, I'm just saying that for the rules.
Councilmembers, if we could, I apologize.
Mr. Kretz, next.
Excuse me?
We need to get, we need to understand what Councilman Alarcon's motion was, if it could be restated.
Wait a minute. Hold on a second. I'm trying to clarify the process question.
I think Mr. Kretz is next on the queue. I'll ask that question, I'll ask Mr. Smith's question.
Okay. Let me just ask a process question. We just voted to end debate, and it seems like now it failed. Do we need to, from the city attorney, do we need to revote that, or is this done? I need an opinion from the city attorney. Hold on a second. We voted to end debate. There was a-
I understand that the motion did not pass, and so it would go to the next speaker.
Okay. The next speaker is Mr. Kretz for the second time.
Well, it wasn't what I planned to ask, but I will ask Mr. Smith's question. Can we do what I would like to see us do, which is provide a second step in the process so that we can create an RFP for a more desirable model program in the future and set aside 10 more to do that.
Councilmembers, David Michelson with the city attorney's office. We would have to take a careful and close look at that suggestion. We cannot sit here today and tell you whether it would be legal or not. I have some actual legal reservations as to its legality. Our suggestion would be to have this ordinance go forward intact, and then that question could be looked at, and we can report back to you as to our thoughts legally and also some practical implications as well.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. I promise I'll be-
Mr. Garcetti, I thought, I thought he was finished. Mr. Kretz.
Sorry, Mr. Kretz.
I wonder if we could ask Montel Williams a quick question. Would that be in order? Order or not?
Sure.
If you have time, well-
Mr. Williams has been given time to speak.
But I have a question for him. Would that be in order?
Well, if you could go off on the side, why don't you, I'll hold, we'll press your button again, we'll put you back in the queue.
This is a public question, not just a question for me to ask him.
I need to get a decision from the city attorney whether that's within process or not. The city attorney, what do I do with that?
It's on their time.
Well, Councilmember, it cannot be in the nature of public comment, as in, this isn't akin to filling out a public speaker card. However, I believe he can give his time, but it would need to be limited to the time that Councilmember Kretz is intact.
Okay.
And I assume that would be the time I had before this whole discussion started about a minute and a half ago.
Mr. Kretz, I'll add your time back in, so why don't you just proceed and ask Mr. Williams a question on your time. I'll give you some extra time.
My question would be-
He could actually stand at the lectern.
Oh, please.
There's a podium there. He can stand there.
I know in some other cities, Sacramento, Berkeley, you have established dispensaries to use your more model system. Did they create a process like this for you, or did you just become a partner of an existing dispensary, and could that not happen through this 100 process?
Mr. Williams, you can go to the podium right there. There's a mic there. It works.
I would assume that both could be done through this system here.
I can't hear you.
Go, Mr. Kretz. One more time with the question, sir. I'm sorry.
The question was, how did you get in the process? Obviously, there are established dispensaries. Was there an RFP process like this, or did you just become a partner of an existing dispensary and clean up their operation?
I'm not a partner of a dispensary. I'm advising dispensaries now as we speak and changing the mode of operanda through advice through those entities.
So through advice to existing dispensaries, you've created a model dispensary in other places?
Yes, sir.
So hope would be, that could be one route here, even if we pass the 100 as we're talking about, that you could work through one of those dispensaries.
No, I think, I think there's not the same opportunity. Just ask one second.
Okay. You've got about 30 seconds left, Mr. Kretz. Are we gonna?
Well, I've asked a question. He's got about 20 seconds to answer.
Yes, sir. You know what it is? It couldn't happen here because there are so many different rules in your amendment that talk about change of management and all those kinds of things that would then prohibit someone from actually working that way. So without me looking at every single tenant, I don't think that can be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I only stayed here to vote on the item that's before us. If we're going to spend any more time tweaking something-
The last speaker in the room.
Then I'm going to leave, and we won't have an ordinance. So we have an opportunity to get the ordinance done, and her presence is going to be right behind me. And so the issue is, we either get the ordinance done, and we can play with words in committee at a later time, because that's the only reason I've been sitting here for an hour and a half. And so I would ask that we move the item, and so we can go about our business, or we deal with it at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. In the interest of concluding towards that end, Mr. Parks and for everybody, first of all, thank you, Mr. Williams. You're the latest of many, many dozens, maybe hundreds of folks who have come here who are facing conditions that we sympathize with, that we have friends and family members who have, and we understand that pain, I think, which is why we have an ordinance, albeit one you would say, and I think all of us could admit is an imperfect one. The reason I framed colleagues at the beginning, do we lose any time for those who would want to improve this if we pass something today? And for those who don't want to see anything, but obviously don't want to see the doors wide open, do they lose anything here today? It seemed like the path was clear. I still believe that path is clear here today, so I still advise that we put this in place. It doesn't slow down for anybody who wants to reform something in the audience or around here, our efforts to be able to do that, not one bit. The only question is, do we move forward with reform if you're a reformer, with something in place or nothing in place? If you're not a reformer, do you want something in place, or do you want nothing in place? That is all we are discussing here today. It shouldn't take very long. We should be able to do that quickly. I think there's good ideas and good discussions that have occurred, and nobody should walk around here with the idea it's not. If we get thrown out, though, any efforts to reform, I believe, get put back, and any efforts to actually control what's happening in our neighborhoods get put back. That's not good for patients, and that's not good for our neighborhoods. So I urge your support. Mr. Smith had a question that I'll ask for him, which was to make sure that the amendment that was put forward to get that study back, is that going to in any way affect our legal standing or the legal case, in your opinion?
So, Councilmembers, the amendment needs to proceed at a later and separate time because we haven't digested it. We think there are significant problems with it as proposed.
And I'm not asking about the substance. I think he's asking about the form of actually moving something forward today, because we're not moving, saying we're passing this. Of course, we want that analysis. Of course, we want the time to think about it. Of course, we want to talk to advocates and hear what the arguments are. The question is more, just having amendment to get the process moving, does that, the report back, is that by the form in any way in gender, in danger of our legal position?
A report back is not an impediment.
Okay. All right. Thank you, then. I would, I see no downside in letting that move forward and moving forward the ordinance today. That's my recommendation, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labonge?
City attorney on this. The only question, Mr. Alarcon, when he spoke of that, what if, because there is no absolute rush, if there was a thought-out working group, thought-out, has county weights and measures been invited in this discussion at all, as other agencies have threw out, to look at it a wider way? This is what my thought is. CLA will listen to that for county weights and measures. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes?
Call the question one more time.
All right. The question has been called. Is there an objection to call to the question? I don't hear an objection. So the debate is ended. So let's open the roll, and we will be voting on two items. Mr. I think we should do it as a-
Just remind me again on the number of votes this would take today under the urgency to pass, and if it did not get the full votes, what would happen?
Mr. Clerk, can you answer that question?
If somebody voted no on this, what would happen?
Mr. Clerk? Okay.
Could I get that?
All right. Let the clerk answer the question, please.
Or our office can answer it, either way.
All right. Go ahead. You answer the question.
If there's 12 votes today, that'll move forward on an urgency basis.
And we only have 12 people sitting here.
If there are less than 12 votes, but at least eight yes votes, it'll still move forward today through sort of the more typical ordinance process in terms of going to the mayor and being published. But it would still be an adoption today by this council of this ordinance, which has impact immediately in that sense. So either way, as long as there's eight votes, it moves forward without the urgency. If there's 12 votes, it'll move forward with the urgency, but it would still move forward.
So, and how would one or the other impact our standing in court?
Well, we think as long as there's at least eight votes yes to move it forward today, that'll be viewed favorably by this judge and will be assistance to us from a sort of litigation perspective. If there's 12 votes, that's that much better, quite frankly, because it has an urgency provision, and that would be the best-case scenario, and we would urge that as well. But again, as long as we get eight, we've made progress, I think, in the court's eyes.
Thank you very much. The, we will vote on the two items. And, Mr. Clerk, the first item?
Councilwoman President.
Hold on just a second, okay? I'm trying to get some instruction from the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, would you please review for the body what the first item is, the ordinance itself, for the record? Everybody listen.
Very good, Madam President. Before you have ordinance, second consideration to temporarily amend Article 5.1, Chapter 4 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, the medical marijuana ordinance until such time as the Order of Preliminary Injunction entered by the Supreme Court of California, County of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles Superior Court, case number B C 433942 is reversed or the medical marijuana ordinance is permanently amended.
All right. Let's open the roll on that item, please. I'm going to do yours next. Can we close the, can we open the roll on that item, please? And then close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. All right. Now let's just, now, Mr. Clerk, if you would repeat Mr. Alarcon's motion for the record. Yes, we're doing it separately.
Mr. Alarcon is asking the Chief Legislative Analyst Office to report back in 45 days relative to driving the quality in the city's medical marijuana program, establishing, how to establish an advisory panel, and potentially establishing a new pool of 10 extra slots for additional dispensaries to be established at a later time.
All right. Would you please open the roll on Mr. Alarcon's motion as amended by Ms. Han? Yes, Mr. Labonge?
What committee does this go to?
Planning Land Use Management.
Okay. Would the Health Committee have any contribution in this area here? You know, could, after it goes to you, come through or whatever will work. Maybe have a joint meeting.
Public safety as well, we'd recommend.
Open the roll on the amendment, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. All right. Thank you very much. Madam City Attorney, you had a question?
Answered. Thank you so much.
And this item should go forth with, please.
Please.
All right. Next item.
That brings us to item number five, called special for Councilmember Kirkorian.
That brings us to item number five, called special for Councilmember Krikorian.
Mr. Krikorian, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam President. I just called this special to make a motion for a technical amendment, actually. Paragraph three of the report that you have before you has a project amount not to exceed $2,172,100 in a project area that covers the entire Laurel Canyon project area. Those facts should also be present in the other paragraphs of the report, and they were not modified. So it's just, I call it special so that we can amend the report to include those two facts for project area and project amount number to be consistent throughout the report.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. If we can clear the board and then reopen it so that we can vote on Mr. Krikorian's amendment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. Next item.
That brings us to item number eight, called special for cards.
Mr. Sacks. Arnold Sacks is our speaker on this, item number eight. Mr. Sacks, if you're still here, would you please come forward?
Madam, Madam President, while Mr. Sacks comes forward, could I ask number 10 go forthwith?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sacks. Of course, I'm concerned, because actually, item number eight mentions no, there's nothing in the item on the agenda that mentions where this transfer of floor rights, to whom it's being made. Just the transfer of rights in the central city community plan and the city center redevelopment project areas. Would this mean, you're making this motion because the CRA just came out with $930 million in projects? Would that have anything to do with this? Would this also be, take any part in maybe any of the development that's going to be planned for the city-owned convention center that AEG wants to tear down so that they can put their football stadium up? And would this also have any effect on the parking garages that the city wants to lease? Because if AEG, figure this, extend this out, if AEG wants to tear down the convention center, which the city owns, and you don't want to sell that property, but you want to sell and lease the parking garages, what is to stop the future owners of these parking garages from tearing them down and building their own stadiums? Just curious to know what's behind the hanky panky and the transfer of this property that you talk about in item number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. That will close our speakers for this item. Any members wishing to be heard on item number eight? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. That is approved. We have, I believe, a special two from Ms. Perry, like to make the findings. And then, colleagues, we have one item and a special meeting, and that is all we have left, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a motion before you today that would extend the transfer of floor area rights, an application for a development located at 428 through 440 South Olive Street and 431 445 South Olive Street in Council District 9. And unless we act today, the application will expire and sends the project back to square one. It's a major development opportunity for the city of Los Angeles, and it would mean $18 million in new revenue to the city should it be built. 7,401 construction jobs, 347 permanent jobs, and these are jobs that we desperately need now. So you previously, as a body, approved this TFA application in May 2008, and I hope that you will take immediate action with me today and approve this motion.
Thank you. On the findings, if we can please prepare the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. All right. That is before us.
May I have that forthwith, please?
Yeah. We still have to vote on it. Mr. Sacks, did you want to give comment on special two?
It's very quickly. Since this motion is being brought by Jan Perry, just curious, and I know that she's a champion of living wage and payment for workers, but she mentioned construction jobs, and it could involve the CRA with their living wage. She did not mention if this construction jobs that would be created would be under the auspices of just the city's living wage ordinance or the CRA's living wage ordinance, which is entirely different than prevailing wage ordinances that are paid for construction jobs. Just a note of clarification there, please.
Thank you. That will close the public comment. If we can please prepare the roll on special item two and close the roll, please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
As approved, we'll send that forthwith. Mr. Krikorian? Number five, forthwith, yes, without objection. We'll send that forthwith. That takes us to our special meeting. If we can please call the roll. We can recess the regular meeting. Very good, sir. Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weisar, Carretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President. And we will come back to our general public comment. Our apologies. We needed to make sure that we had folks for the last one, and I know we've taken up two items. We'll get to the public comment just next, right after. First item, please. Item number 18. We have one card from the public on this. Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward on 18?
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. The First Amendment to the contract of the specific plan for Lawa. I thought there was an amendment already made to that contract for the specific plan. I thought the Tom Bradley West Terminal was the amendment to the specific plan. There was at one time when all this construction was proposed three years ago, when it was a $3 billion upgrade to LAX, a midfield concourse that was going to be built. And then it was decided that the midfield concourse couldn't be built due to the time sequence. So that the, um, the amendment to the general plan was to create the Tom Bradley West Terminal while the cost of the redevelopment at the airport went to $6 billion. Now, we're at $10 billion. Nobody has blinked an eye about $10 billion of redevelopment work going on and upgrading at the airport. And you have this new amendment to Camp Drescher and McGee, who's been involved at the airport for four years, or three years, while the contracts have been going on. And it's $10 billion total cost, and you're going to make another amendment, which isn't included into $10 billion that had been projected. So that means it could be more than $10 billion in projected costs at renovation for Lawa. And by the way, that doesn't include any transportation, like light rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. We'll close the public hearing on this. If no members wish to be heard on this item, this has gone through committee, we'll go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith, forthwith from Ms. Han, without objection. We'll adjourn the regular meeting if we can go back to, sorry, the special meeting, if we can go back to the regular meeting for general public comment. Antonio Ramirez is our first speaker. Thank you for your patience. Arnold Sacks will follow her. And eight and nine forthwith without objections as well.
Is it two minutes or three minutes?
Two minutes.
I would like to do an invocation for all our kick-ass pilots and all our courageous and loyally fierce military veterans who are no pussies by but a human blend of thrill-seekers with excitement, pizazz, highly confident, extremely coordinated, that with a growing sense of intelligence. I am honored to be directly and indirectly in their circle of love for humanity. Thus, the universe handpicked these brilliant, coordinated whippersnappers to fly her bosom because only these selected pilots have the right stuff with innate wisdom to respect with reverence the earth and all its changeable and unpredictable elements. Hence, I honor and directly love the following: the United States Coast Guard, the United States Military Aviators, the United States Top Gun, the United States Marine Corps, the United States Navy, the United States Navy SEALs, the United States Army, the United States Air Force, the United States Air National Guard, the United States Top Bra-
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt you, and we'll pause your time so that you have it. If you could bring it, we appreciate those great feelings you have for all those groups. For public comment, it has to be for things that the Los Angeles City Council has direct jurisdiction over. So, for instance, the police departments or something. We don't control the United States Army or any of those things. So, hold on one second, ma'am. If so, if you can just bring it back to things that have to do with the city of Los Angeles, or else it's going to be out of order under our state Brown Act.
Yes, well, they, these residents live in the city. You know what I mean? They still are living and fighting for this city, as I am.
Okay. Well, please bring it back to the city.
My father was military to, for this city. Do you understand?
I do, ma'am, but you have to make that explicit. You have to talk about Los Angeles or things under our direct control under public comment.
You cut me off two minutes.
Okay. I promise you, I'll give you your time back, but I need you to listen to that carefully or else we can't take public comment under the State's Brown Act. It would be in violation. We have to talk about things that are under our jurisdiction.
Do I have to ask every military veteran if they reside in the city of Los Angeles? Because I know my father did, and I'm speaking on behalf of my father, who is now dead and worked for the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. I'll tell you one more time, and I'll be as straightforward as possible. We have to have things that are under the direct jurisdiction, and it's your turn to communicate to the city council about business that we have, okay? Thank you.
Well, business is, I guess this is worldwide business. It's in the interest of their welfare and safety. So again, the United States Defense and the United States Sheriffs and Police Choppers in Los Angeles, and my beloved Gillespie Airfield pilots, their devil pilots extraordinaire, all commercial airline pilots who live also in Los Angeles, the United States Towers, all aircraft mechanics, and one of my icons, General Chuck Yeager, combat fighter and a pilot, and a test pilot. I don't know if he lives in Los Angeles. I submit myself before the beautiful universe and ask that you bless and protect all our pilots and the US military veterans who possibly live in LA. May you make them whole and complete in every area of their lives. Dispense to them all your protection safeguards and imbue them with peace, joy, happiness, health, stability, prosperity, wisdom, enthusiasm, safety, confidence, love, with sound mind, body, soul, spirit in a glowing aura. May you bless all airport operations and all our communication exchanges. I graciously thank you. Namamida butsu, namamida butsu, namamida butsu. P.S. Pilots and veterans, I love your energy and spirit of camaraderie. And please, don't forget to buzz the tower. And having said that, Mr. Gilgash said, even though you are a very well-versed individual, after your father, I'm sure, my father worked for this city, so please, don't censor me.
No, ma'am. I want to say this really clearly. We love that you love those folks, and we love those folks, too. The city attorney has given us, the city attorney, I know, we can, we can, the city attorney has advised us, though, it's not just for people that live in Los Angeles, for instance. Someone can't come here and talk to us about LA County things, even though it's Los Angeles. It has to be about city business. It's not just a free hour to talk on television. It's actually about the business of LA. So I let you finish today, but in the future, and I promise you, it is no insult meant to you, it is wonderful to hear your voice say that, but in the future, it has to be about business we have before. So thank you for your understanding, okay? Thank you. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. I'm sorry, the time's out. I can talk to you separately, but Arnold Sacks's turn is now. Thank you so much, ma'am. And we really appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. It's just a shame I missed out on having Tim Lawicki not here today. He was presenting his appeal to the Trade Commerce and Tourism Committee for the stadium plans. So let's see. He said no public funding would be involved. But you know what? He got free public safety for almost 10 years for all the events that were held at Staples Center and LA Live. You figure 320, 330 events a year, times 10 years, that's 3,300 events that he never paid, AEG, LA Live didn't pay for public safety. Now, he's got a new hotel on his property. 25 years, no bed tax payment to the city. Approximately $10 million a year, and that's only going to go up. So that's another $250 million. But no public money is being spent on his stadium, or will be spent. So who will make up the difference in providing the funds that AEG doesn't pay for those two options? Option number two, point number two. We're only going to have, it won't be much traffic because there are only 10 football games. You can land a helicopter on the freeway. But this article says he wants to hold 50 events in his convention center slash stadium. Well, 50 events, there's only 26 Sundays. So where are the other 24 days going to come from, and what about the traffic on those events? Well, that doesn't count. But we know open and transparency is the call of the day. I actually like it better when the stooges say, "For duty and humanity."
Thank you very much, Ms. Summers. Next is a public comment for Oliver Summers. So noted Sarah Armstrong. So noted Brad Barnes. So noted Nick Kagan. So noted Walter McTell. Please come forward. Kim Neverman, Josh Broussard, and Tony Broussard. These are all the cards I have. Mr. Clerk, just a second, Mr. Beckman. These are all the cards that I have, so noted. Thank you, sir. Go forward.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon. I just wanted to say something about mafia activities in our city. I noticed that Mr. Holder, our United States Attorney General, has thankfully prosecuted some people back east, the Gambino family again, and the Colombo family. But I hope that somebody can send him a message that there's lots more mafia out here on the West Coast. Maybe it's, in fact, the entire city of Las Vegas will explain to you how much mafia there is there. If he says that he wants to prosecute mafia, I, for one, in particular, be more than happy to explain how the activities out here are more than infected in our entertainment industry. But I just wanted to say, because I don't think that that's really what's going on. If you really wanted to prosecute the mafia, you'd have researched the information, especially during the early '60s, about how the state of New York kicked out people in the radio industry and the music industry, people like Alan Freed and Peter Tripp, and even Dick Clark, and prosecuted them. And I've been a victim of them ever since then, and there's even a BMI consent decree. But for some reason, if they were kicked out of the state of New York and they came out here and set up shop here in California, that doesn't constitute a prosecution, this thing to be prosecutable. At least, I haven't seen anything yet, and nobody's talked to me, and I'm not aware of anything going on. So if he says he really wants to prosecute the mafia, he needs to come right out here, and I can even give him names if he wants.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, any other business before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting interrferal.
So ordered.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused on February 15 due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on January 25th and 26th, and March 1st, 2nd, 4th, and 8th due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on April 15, July 22nd, and October 21 due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Council, excuse me. Council President Garcetti requests to arrive at 10:30 on February 1 due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to leave at 12:45 on February 2 due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Councilmember Reyes requests to leave at 11 o'clock on February 1 due to city business that meets council policy.
Grant it.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on February 1, 2nd, 4th, 8th, 9th, 15th, 16th, 18th, and 23rd due to city business that meets council policy.
Correct.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Members, do we have any announcements? Any announcements? The only announcement I want to make is there's a great exhibit in Jan Perry's district. Jan, right there at the fabulous restored Pacific Electric Building on the top floor, Phil Stern's JFK. Yesterday marked the fiftieth anniversary of President Kennedy's inaugural. Phil Stern, a great Los Angeles photographer who's still living, was on the hip of JFK and Frank Sinatra capturing that beautiful moment of history. It's eighty show, the public's invited, six-ten South Main, for Phil Stern's retrospective on the JFK inaugural. Members, let's all stand. Announcements? Okay, stand, please. Okay, announcements?
Miss Me?
I know, you go ahead, Ms. Han. Ms. Han?
Oh, Ms. Han, oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to announce that the Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro is celebrating her eightieth birthday, and tonight there will be a gala affair at the Warner Grand Theater, one of the original Warner Brothers Theaters, a beautiful theater that the city owns and operates, and she's celebrating her eightieth birthday tonight, so everyone's welcome to come down to San Pedro for that event.
Congratulations, Mr. Alarcon. All right, now we're, all right, members, we're no more announcements at this time, but we're going to stand for adjourning motions, even though our council is without quorum, they will be entered on Tuesday, but we're going to take the time of this day to honor those at this moment. So the meeting is complete, but they will be formally entered on Tuesday. So would stand for adjourning motions. Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, council members, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of a giant in American history, and that is Robert Sergeant Schreiber. Sergeant Schreiber, fifty years ago, was appointed to, by President Kennedy, to spearhead the Peace Corps. He passed away on January eighteenth at the age of ninety-five. He was born on November ninth, nineteen fifteen, and married Eunice Kennedy in nineteen fifty-three at Saint Patrick's Cathedral in New York. During that time, he worked for Joseph Kennedy at his Chicago merchandising business. He was a devoutly conservative Roman Catholic, but very liberal in his politics. He represented a kind of America now largely disappeared from national affairs. He was a scion of, an old East Coast family, born into wealth, but with a devoutly unselfish feeling for public service. His brother-in-law, President John F. Kennedy, who Schreiber had first met at school, appointed him the first chief of the Peace Corps, as I said, fifty years ago. He remained in that post until nineteen sixty-six. Schreiber would say that he got the job because everyone in Washington seemed to think that the Peace Corps was going to be the biggest fiasco in history, and it would be much easier for the president to fire a relative than a friend. After President Kennedy's assassination, President Lyndon Johnson put Schreiber in charge of the newly created Office of Economic Opportunity, and he continued there until nineteen sixty-eight as the nation's untitled but effective chief campaigner against poverty. He used the office to create about a dozen institutions to help the young, elderly, the disadvantaged, and the poor. Some of these institutions survive today, and we take them for granted, but they were inspired by his leadership, including Head Start, the Americorps, Job Corps, Job Corps Legal Services for the Poor, Upward Bound, and Community Action Project. Sergeant Schreiber also helped his wife by creating the Special Olympics, helping her to create the Special Olympics, which continues today. And he served as president of the Special Olympics from nineteen eighty-four and chairman from nineteen ninety to two thousand and three. Sergeant Schreiber is a very special American. He emerged out of wealth, but was extremely passionate about the poorest among us and wanted to end poverty. I only wish that today's billionaires, with the exception of few, I only wish that today's billionaires were more akin to Sergeant Schreiber, because I know that with their tremendous resources, they could help solve more problems in our society. He was a public servant who cared deeply for his family, he'd be truly missed, may he rest in peace, of course. He is the father of our recently retired First Lady of California, Maria Schreiber. His four sons, Robert, Timothy, Mark, Anthony, one is a city council member, I believe it's Robert. Bobby is a city council member in our neighboring city of Santa Monica, and Mark and Anthony, of course, and nineteen grandchildren. We would do well to remember his memory, but more importantly, act as he acted, to do everything we could to end poverty in America.
Thank you very much. We should have all members, Ms. Han, and I think in your suggestion, as often is the case, a formal commendation from our creative services with all members' signatures. No greater American than I could think of in this type of work than Sergeant Schreiber, and from the Peace Corps through the Special Olympics, may he rest in peace. Ms. Han?
Yeah, I would just, because I also had that adjourning motion as well, and I was just thinking, as you mentioned, we are salivating the fiftieth anniversary of the inauguration of John F. Kennedy yesterday, and so when you look at Sergeant Schreiber, no one probably epitomized that great moment in President Kennedy's speech of, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." And Sergeant Schreiber, with his work in the Peace Corps, his work on the war on poverty, being an ambassador to France, and then, you know, being a candidate for vice president in nineteen seventy-two, I mean, he really did answer that call. And you know, he was diagnosed with Alzheimer's in, I believe, two thousand and three, and our wonderful First Lady, former First Lady of California, Maria Schreiber, really became a voice about the pain a family goes through when someone has that disease, but she really became sort of a voice on the education and hopefully the finding answers to that terrible disease as a result of her father suffering that. So our best wishes go to the entire family.
Mr. Weezaar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues asked that we adjourn today in memory of a good friend of mine and good friend of the city of Los Angeles, and someone who we've honored here in council for his work with young people. I'm talking about the remarkable Cesar Calderon. He died unexpectedly at the age of forty-five on Monday, January seventeenth. He was the president and chief executive officer of Saldad Enrichment Action, known as SEA. It is a nonprofit organization that serves at-risk youth and their families throughout Los Angeles County. He has held the position since two thousand and four, and prior to that, he was the organization's chief operating officer and chief financial officer. During his tenure at SEA, the organization grew from three million in the mid nineteen nineties to just over thirty million in two thousand and ten. It now serves more than three thousand five hundred youth and families annually at nineteen sites throughout Los Angeles County and employs two hundred and fifty-seven people, many from the community SEA serves. Especially important is that Cesar oversaw the creation of SEA Charter School and now forthof the organization's alternative high school program for at-risk youth. It is now one of the largest charter schools in California and one of the few schools that exclusively serves this important high-risk population. Cesar was born in Guatemala and first came to SEA in nineteen eighty-one. He was educated in Guatemala in the area of finance, and he began working first as an accountant for the organization. However, his real interest in SEA was in the capacity to change the direction of the lives of young people who appeared to be lost and many had forgotten. In fact, his own brother's life had been profoundly affected by the people of SEA. Once a troubled homeless teenager, he became one of the greatest of SEA's many success stories. Although Cesar quickly succeeded professionally, he always took care to develop himself as a man, a husband, a father, a son, a mentor, and a friend. He believed strongly in the importance of personal growth and improvement, not as a matter of self-interest, but as a way to give more fully to the world in which he lived. He saw the potential in everyone, especially those who had given up, especially those who had been given up on, certainly by our society, and even some had, their families had given up on them as well. He knew through his own experience that the solution was not just to help, but rather to empower. As a result, a philosophy based on teamwork combined with self-improvement and self-empowerment permeated submission of the organization that he served so ably. Over the years, Cesar received numerous awards and honors for service to the community. In two thousand and eight, for example, he received the James Irving Foundation Leadership Award for Advancing Innovative and Effective Solutions to Significant State Issues. He served on many boards, including those of Overness Inc., Plaza Community Services, St. Michael's Elementary School, Azbuenas Novas Christian Center, and the Time Warner Cable Hispanic Advisory Board. As a good friend of mine, I sent by this last, if you would know Cesar and talk to Cesar, you felt at peace, and you felt like he was there, willing to help in any way he can. I often went to him for advice and counsel, and he was a special individual. Memorial of Services will take place this Sunday. At six P.M., at Iglesia Azbuenas, I got it. Memorial of Services will take place this Sunday, J-33rd at six P.M. At Iglesia Azbuenas Novas, located at one-one-nine-one Alhambra Boulevard in Norwalk. Floor arrangements and condolences can be mailed there as well. Funeral services will take place Monday at nine A.M. at Forest Lawn Cemetery at six-three-hundred Forest Lawn Drive. May he rest in peace.
Rest in peace, thank you. Mr. Corretz.
Yes, I'd also like to adjourn in memory of a good friend, Sherry Gamson of Encino. I was greatly saddened to learn of her recent passing at the age of seventy-four. I'm sure some of you here today knew and loved Sherry, for she and her husband Sherman touched many of our lives. They were a magnificent, charming duo of community activists. Sherry and Sherman were very involved in local neighborhood council efforts and did a lot to help the people of Los Angeles at the community level, mostly in their beloved San Fernando Valley. They were also endlessly involved in Democratic Party causes, and seemed like they worked on almost every Democratic campaign in the past twenty years or so. Sherry is a wonderful friend who worked as a volunteer with intense dedication, piercing wisdom, endearing patience, and joyful idealism. She was a sweet, fun, and just a dear person, and she is survived by her husband Sherman, her children David and Terry, her grandchildren Eric and Rachel, and she'll be deeply missed and never forgotten by anyone that ever met with her, met her and worked with her.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry?
I also wanted to-
Second, Mr. Alarcon.
I also knew Cesar and actually thought we all should sign on to it, because he really touched a lot of people through his work, and especially a lot of young people. So if Mr. Weezaar is fine with that, I think we should all sign on and honor his memory and his family, too.
Thank you very much. Members, I'd like to ask for you, remember tribute, Miriam Oldsburg, a great senior citizen, lived to be ninety-two, lived in the NoHo Towers, was very involved with all the organizations that helped that senior center, and also bought the first talking signal light where they would have, for hearing impaired, the noise that helped people cross safely. Miriam Oldsburg, a great American, ninety-two years old, a veteran, may she rest in peace. Stand right now, this completes the Los Angeles City Council on this day, we wish everybody a good day and a good weekend. Thank you very much.